Dear Lord, we've come to you in prayer in time when our country faces confusion, disruption, anger, and a lack of trust. You have shown us to respect and love others in our actions and decisions. Lead us to find ways to help our community work together to solve problems and help us understand the impact felt in our community for actions that occur around the world. Show us compassion for those of us who are children. In the time of uncertainty, Lord, we ask for your love, safety for our children and our families at home and in their families. Protect our employees and keep them safe while doing difficult jobs. Lord, we trust in you and ask for blessings for all and us to thy service.
Amen.
First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Consider approval of the May 4, 2020 regular meeting minutes.
May approval.
Motion by Councilmember Councilman Second by Councilmember Hall for the discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. We have two public hearings. First is a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2021 City of Alamooral budget. If it is a public hearing, we would be glad to hear from anyone who hears you speak or organizes.
Your Honor, public hearing is open. Public hearing is open. Just some members of -- I hate this because I got my back to people and I cannot stand my back to people. Please it's not back to the door. As many of you may have gotten when you were told or asked by Michael Ferris if we had questions about the budget to send them to him. I sent in, I guess, thirteen of them. Oh, dumb. I guess it was thirteen of them. When I printed it off, it was five pages full. And so I hope that my members of the council and they are got those questions of which I was concerned and the answers that will give them back to us. This is probably of the many budgets that I've taken part in. This is probably one that's going to have the most impact. And we are going about it, and this is just me speaking, we are going about it based on complete guess on many things because of where we have been the last three and a half months and where our city as a business is right now. And this doesn't fall back on any of our departments. It just is what it is based on where we are. And the questions that I asked, I felt very strong about, and you know, I'm willing to talk about any of them, but you all got the answers just like I did. I guess, you know, one of the questions I had was, what happens if the league has said for us to take 10% annuals? You know how Michael said he got to where it was, taking 10% of where we were before we started? And I'm thinking, you know what? The numbers there just don't add up to me. And I said, what happens if we get caught? And one of the answers to us is we'll just keep our place in positions. And you know what? If we got places in positions, is it something that we need and not have at all? So there's just a lot of things that I have here, a lot of concerns I have. I will not take the time to go over all of them right now, but I hope that fellow members of council will look at those questions and look at the answers that Michael has given to us. And Michael, I appreciate the information that you sent to us about the motor vehicle tax, where other counties or other cities were doing it and that kind of thing. But I have mine printed off if nobody else has.
If I am understanding correctly, Michael, the positions you're talking about, frozen currently are vacant, but you're saying you will not hire them until we see how this process goes?
Right. There are some. We've got a small operation where you've got to fill that in. If you've got larger operations, like in the police department, there are currently five or six open, we can freeze a couple of those and keep those open. Well, you know, the other, when you're building a budget, there's the budget side and being cautious, and then there's the management of it throughout the year. So instead of cutting things out right off the bat, we've got the opportunity to manage it throughout the year. That's sort of the approach we're taking rather than the just, you know, if we wanted, say, $240,000, $300,000 just completely out of the general fund cut, then we could just eliminate the six positions. But I don't think that's what we want to do.
Further question? How many did we get much feedback from public inquiries?
I haven't received any public inquiries. I was like, I had one phone call. I did have one phone call, and I returned the call. That person voicemail answered the question. They called me back. They still lie and it's not their back.
That was gonna be my question also. Since we met last, I know we normally put it in the public library, but they was closed for a pretty good amount of time. I don't know when they opened.
Last weekend.
Last week.
Two weeks.
Okay. And there is a copy in the letter.
Okay. And then we normally post it on the city website, just for the general public's information. What other means would you make, or if there are, to make them aware of what's in there?
I think there's a link on our Facebook, all of our social media sites. There's a copy available with the clerk, copy is available on Quest, online, the library. So we try to do candidates, physical and electronic copies where we can think of it. And that's all you can do during a time like this. We're exhausted.
And as I indicated, we are doing a little bit of a guessing, trying to, so we may have to adjust the budget throughout the year as we see how things go.
Yeah.
I know I sound like a broken record on this issue. I worry about fund balance. And I know that we recently have a fund balance, of course, as for times of adversity, you've got something to fall back on. But I noticed in the general fund, we appropriated fund balance of $543,000. What will we be left, if we have to spend it off? What will we be left in our fund balance in the general fund?
We currently have at close of fiscal year '19, so that's June 30. 2019, 6.2 million.
Now, none of that is encumbered in any way. Because if it is encumbered at all, then it's not reserved. So you're saying we've got 6.2 million?
That's right.
There is no encumbrance on any of that money at all?
Right. There's been discussions that possibly some of them say payback for some loans and other things that happened that we might have needed to turn around to the revolving loans. But that doesn't have to happen. So it's not officially committed toward anything, and there's no, this is net of any payments that we have to make. So council has said that they may be this or that, but nothing as they're formally committed and designated, it can't be changed.
Well, if we have that, I feel very good for the next.
Follow-up question, Mayor. On that $500,000, so how much to balance the current budget that we're in 1920? What was our, and I don't have in front of me, what did we ask or say we were going to take from fund balance to balance this current year's budget? Colleen might know it off the head on the general fund.
I don't think I have it. I did change it three years ago.
Oh, yes, but with budgeting, I'm saying this time last year when we were talking the budget, how much did we pull out of general fund to balance it? Because here's what happens, guys.
$250,000.
How many?
Maybe $250,000 is what I recall.
$250,000 is what we're not going to use.
Well, right.
That's what, $200,000? No, I'm sorry. So that's why I mentioned, that's why I mentioned the budget management. If you budget real conservative, we at this point, we don't have to do those things. But it balances as is, and then we get through the year, and we don't have to use fund balance, and we don't have to do certain things on the more cautious side. So that's what the budget management throughout the year comes in. As Colleen says, right now, as it stands, we don't anticipate using what we budget.
If you look on the $543, three, over $300,000 of it, maybe on the year to forward, is for one-time projects and one-time capital projects. It did not take as much just to balance the everyday expenses. It just, I think you said two roofs in there, one in the Wadio Center, one in the fire department, and one could redo the vacuum truck?
That's right.
That's where you can have the expenses in there as high as they are this year in terms of the one-time.
But I would, and I appreciate the comment, and I appreciate your comment about where we are. But that's just, you know, that's, you take that money because we got there to make it balance out. But what we as a council have got to do is to realize that every year, we need some of those capital expenses, okay? I mean, there's one-time expenses that are one-time a year, because if we don't, we're continuing to push them out and push them out. What the public needs to hear is, is that, and I may be wrong here, so I'm looking at Michael, looking at Colleen, every penny on the tax rate is about $100,000. Is that right?
About $110,000.
About $110,000. So being conservative, $100,000. So we're looking at using five cents, if you will, to balance the budget from fund balance. I mean, five, what would have been five cents on our tax rate? So I'm just, I'll tell you, I spent a lot of time on it, and I guess the last thing I'd like to say is that to the folks listening to this, I asked Michael, one of my questions was, so give me the bottom line, what's a household going to get? Because people want to hear that. What is it that they're going to, what is it, Lord, they're going to be charged or what are they going to get a deal on? And motor vehicles are going up, five dollars. Household disposable, so our trash and recyclers, low to 10 cents. Isn't that right?
Yes.
No?
No.
No. 48 cents. 48 cents because, all right, total of, so 50 cents there. Electric will be decreasing. Water and sewer is going to increase. So to our person out there who has a $100,000 house, they're going to get a decrease on their electric. Their solid waste and recycle is going up about 50 cents. Their water and sewer is going up about, well, 6 and 8%. Is that correct? So that's what, to the people out there that watch and hear this, that's what's going on. And last comment that I'll make, and it might be on here somewhere else, but it's in the budget, and I think it plays in the budget, is the issue of pools. And I know there's been some conversation about that. Do you want to say something about pools? And we, and I appreciate, so appreciate Nikki and Lisa coming up with us talking points about the pools and why we are not opening them. We're not doing anything in the budget with those at this point, or with Michael. We're just leaving them in there as you have proposed, as if they weren't opening and that kind of thing, and we will adjust it back.
Right. That's the way they are right now.
Even though, right, in the budget, they're opening. In the budget, they're opening.
We have enough funding for it.
In reality, we've already made a comment, now a month before this budget takes place, that we're not opening. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. And I just want my fellow council members to realize that, that, you know, in the budget, we're doing this. We've got the money for it. That's what we're voting on. But we've already said we're not opening them. So just that, why? And I will shut up if anybody wants to pop off line about any of this. Here's my notes.
And I don't know if this is the place to ask, are other pools in other municipalities doing the same thing? Are we following suit?
Nikki, Nikki, did you provide an email or Lisa?
On top of my head, Troy, Greensboro.
About 10, about 10 of them.
Yeah, there were several of them.
That are following suit, not opening?
Yes. And I would add to the point about funding pools. Like Michael said, it's about budget work, we also have a mandate to budget. The hope is that in that end of the year, we have a budget to deal with. We can use some other things alongside playgrounds. We definitely need to do playgrounds.
So at this point, get out tomorrow, the only pools that are open are the Y's and the others. And we're waiting to find out tomorrow after they're closed, they're going to decide on phase three. That's what I meant for.
Our choices in this month.
We hope.
Further comments, questions?
Chair, just a personal observation, explain the logic of why we reduce the occupancy tax by 5%.
Sure. It's, nothing about the fee amount is changing, but we budgeted 50% less than what we budgeted this year. Occupancy tax, that is basically the hotel motel tax. So I believe in this current fiscal year, not knowing we're going to get into the coronavirus issue and the impact it'll have on travel, I budgeted about, I believe, about $140,000 is what I recall. And so for next year, because we're now seeing the effects of this, just like we reduced sales taxes 10% off of what they were running, we've also anticipated occupancy tax being less than what we had been running because of the impact the COVID-19 issues having on travel. So we just took 50%. Again, it's a little bit of a guess, but it's not a massive amount in our budget. But hopefully, if you look at the occupancy trends for hotels in Alamooral, you notice you think always here that there's not enough hotel rooms, and I think that's correct, the trend, because they stay fairly consistent with the occupancy tax revenue year-round. So that also tells you it's not, probably not seasonal to a lot of business travel. So, and so those related business travel, make the assumption that some of that's going to have to reason, it can't be delayed for that number. Some of it can, you conduct electronic, there'll be new ways of doing it, but some of it should rebound. That's the reason for this introduction.
I happen to be president of the Homeowners Association, and the pool issue is the biggest thing we've faced in the long, long time. In South Carolina, the Department of Health has issued a set of guidelines for opening pools. And I believe there are 16 different elements in that set of guidelines. And if you, if you follow those guidelines in terms of liability and that sort of thing, you're probably going to be in pretty good shape. I was wondering, does North Carolina do anything like that? Do you have a set of X number of guidelines that you have to follow to open a pool?
So the state issued guidelines and CDC issued guidelines, which we should all of those into consideration. The difference between us and the private pool is that, you know, we have to be as we responsible. We also have very young staff who are responsible, who are helping us manage our pool. And we essentially have a lot of young children who come in and pay a small fee and they're left there all day. So in time to manage them and socially visit them, there are also happens that provide almost care for our children throughout the day. So it compounds the issue of providing care and then also trying to operate within some strict guidelines to mitigate this rare COVID-19. And so regarding our public pools, there is an extra set of circumstances that you have to consider.
Just as a follow-up to that, Count Man, just for our knowledge, why you say, just how you may be elaborate, what are they doing? You know what they're doing specifically with their pool and over deep, what do they open, or run?
I was there this morning, okay? There, you have one in, one way in, one way out. You can have, if you are going to swim laps, you can only, I mean, the lap pools are spread out with laps. You can only be in there 30 minutes a piece. So if you think about the pool pool, there are six laps in there. There could be no more in the water aerobics classes they had in some number, I can't even remember what the numbers, they determined no more than this many can be in there. And when they're in the pool, you have to stay, and they kept saying that next year so it's good for some people. But you have to realize, there, here in open swim or aerobics, there's probably not going to be, and there were probably 12 people in that aerobics class this morning, okay? And when they have their children, now there are going to be times in the, in the pool where the summer kids will be in there. And the children are there, I don't know how they're going to handle that. But part of that CDC, and I don't know if it's CDC or if it's CHK, yes, there was a big discussion, the big fuss was about the changing rooms, okay? It wasn't so much about the pool itself, but it was about close proximity and folks when they're changing or showering. That is the big issue. And that didn't, the Wayne CA has locked off every other shower. I mean.
And so, so they've taken steps there, and I'm sure that the numbers allowed in a pool at one time there is going to be drastically reduced.
We're in your own town.
And Lisa, Lisa's on the call, she's asking if you guys have any questions specifically of her, but to go back to Councilmember Hughes' question, you have Troy, Landis, Lexington, Greensboro, High Point, Thomasville, Davidson County, and Forsyth County, who have already made a decision not to open their pools. The city of Monroe is considering phase three, Moore Mountain, phase three, Anson County, phase three, Mecklenburg County, they are going to open an indoor pool in limited hours with their outdoor pools. And then also the city of Winston-Salem is considering opening a few pools during phase three.
And we go back, Lisa sent to each of us a bulleted list, okay? And for which I am grateful. Please pass that back to her, Nikki.
So just recircling, the Moore Mountain, they're considering opening in phase three, which is the middle part of July, is that correct?
Yes, hopefully. Hopefully, all of them.
Further comments? Questions?
I just want to clarify, are there any questions from Lisa or?
So the process for the budget that we, we can approve it on only one hearing?
You can approve it on one hearing, it's up to council where you want to do that tonight. You can close the public hearing and wait till the next meeting if you want to. We can do whatever council desires to do.
I'd like to see, just go ahead and approve it. We need to get going.
If there's no further comments, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Set.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second. By Councilmember Hall to close the public hearing for the discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. All right, council, what's your wishes on how you want to proceed with the vote?
I'd like to make the motion, let me approve it. Let me ask President.
Motion by Councilmember Ramet to approve the vote. Second by Councilmember Lauer. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Six one. For five, the civil rights for position, a lease permit. I'll ask staff to introduce the group.
Thank you, Mayor. Would you like to?
Anyone that's going to speak, come forward, let's break me out one time. You have a model?
Got a model?
Yeah, it's all right, sir.
There's one up here, probably. There's one back, previous behind the.
I can't find the words.
That's right.
Moving everybody around. Can't find it.
I have one in my office. Bless her lord. She's got one wrong. You want me to get mine out of my office?
You can just swear or affirm this, ma'am.
Colleen's on the office.
Here it is.
Okay. I thought it'd be behind. Somebody needs to stop Colleen. Stop Colleen.
If you're ready to, if you're ready to raise your right if you're going to speak. If you're ready to raise your right.
I'll raise my right hand.
Do you swear or affirm testimony about giving the truth, the whole truth, the truth that you got?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I can cross you on charge.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any screens, I'm gonna try to jump through this the best I can from what I've got here. We do have an app, an application in for a conditional use permit from Safe and Children Federation Incorporated, and they're represented tonight by Carrie Zarden and Farzad Zarden, sorry, and Christopher Felder. This is a city property. We are leasing out to Safe and Children, and that's a Head Start facility there at 405 Davis Streets. So this is owned, there's three lots there, one is owned for MDP, labor business admitted to a R.A., two family residential. And what the Head Start would like to do would be to put a modular unit in there to expand their classroom, to add two extra classrooms into that unit there on the property. That is in R.A., two family residential, isn't allowed use there, but it does require conditional use permit. And. Put a few pages in there, we've got a map there, you can kind of see where it's going to be drawn in, the approximate dimensions of the building and the stairwell of the new community for the rent, if you need to hang that facility, show will be on site there. And then there is a example of the product they want to put in the modular unit there. Let's see. So I'll read through these, and I'll go ahead and record the applicant as well, and then come up and expand on them a little bit more. We'll go through the criteria on this, and we'll do that certification at the same time on that. First, first criteria is to be useful, not materially. If materially endangered public health or safety, if located where the codes are developed according to plan, is submitted and provided. The applicants have provided that 405 Davis Streets parcel has been utilized as preschool program for decades. Safe and Children's intention is to continue the same practice, so they're just expanding there on site. And as a result, there should be no material endangerment of public health or safety if the preschool classroom modular unit is relegated as proposed. The, further, the Head Start programs serve preschool children who are disadvantaged, and there are some quotes in there from Urban Child Listen publication about the benefits of having the Head Start programs in the neighborhoods. Let's see, is that one? Let's see, real quick. Okay. Also, that the use needs all required, okay, staff's analysis is that the use of the vacant facility is ongoing and permitted use, and staff does not find proposed increase in usage density detrimental to similar surrounding residential uses there. Primarily due to the fact that we've had one there for so long, haven't had any kind of issues with it. The, let's see, the second criteria, that the use needs all required conditions and specifications. The applicants have provided that the use of proposed modular unit needs all zoning codes and building codes. Furthermore, proposed plan, we call setbacks, about 300 parts in chapter 92. In addition, Safe and Children strictly follows federal guidelines for design playgrounds. Existing playground needs a federal standard of 75 square feet per child. Addition of two preschool classrooms not compromised, square footage requirements as scheduled is, as a schedule is followed to restrict playground access to one classroom at a time. Staff has provided the site plan there, and we do believe it is all zoning requirements of setting size, et cetera. There is a discrepancy between what we have in the zoning ordinance and what Safe requires. We do require a 100 square feet outdoor play area for a child versus a 75. And although they are planning on adding some additional there, if there's any other, if there's any more, that is, even if they have a bunch of room in the back there, they can easily expand that, that play area. Also, a, from our buffering sections of the zoning ordinance, say, six-foot okay fencing and buffer door requirements will be required to be installed there. The applicants are aware of that, they've agreed to that as well, so some will typically take care of at the time of installation. See, the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or bonding property, or alternatively, the use may be a public necessity. The applicants state that the use of proposed modular unit will not injure the value of adjoining property, as the proposed preschool services are consistent with the current use of adjoining property. As noted in subsection A above, there's data supports the positive effects the 3K programs have on children and communities. Staff's analysis there, we're not going to argue with that, and we haven't seen any kind of evidence to the contrary, that it would decrease property values by having that there. D, the proposed use is in harmony with the adjacent use in terms of location, scale, site design, hours, operation, and operating characteristics. The, yes, the proposed modular is a single-story structure, similar footprint and scale of adjacent structures, and is proposed to be used in harmony with adjacent structure. Harmony includes both the usage of the structure as well as the construction materials and design. Staff does believe the app. Staff doesn't believe the use of the daycare facility is in contrast to future land use plan.
You've heard staff make the presentation. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, so anyone who cares to speak will have to have standing in the permit. If anyone has a question of whether they have standing or not, our attorney will make that decision. First, I'll ask the applicant to make his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson, your honor. Thank you, and councilmembers, thank you for having us. I'm gonna pull this thing in, still adjusting to that. Anyways, we do thank you for allowing us to present here this afternoon. What Mr. Robinson has shared is, just to sum all of that up, we want to fix a two-classroom modular unit on the property that you also graciously allow us, allow us to occupy just under a year ago. That will allow us to add two classrooms, two additional Head Start classrooms to the, to the property, and if no one asks why, but if you care to know why, all Head Start programs are required to conduct a community assessment every year. And, and, and the purpose for that is to check for population trends and changes in that. And so, the Almarve park of our service area, we can't meet with the man, we haven't met with the number of classrooms that we have there, so the data indicates that we actually have more children to serve in this part of our service area than other parts, so that's why we're making the adjustment or proposing to serve more children. Actually, we have a longer waiting list here than we do in other parts of our service area. So I'm happy to take any questions, but that's pretty much what we're endeavoring to do.
What, what happens when, if you ever, hopefully you don't ever leave Almarve, but end up thinking that you do, with a modular study?
No, sir. And, and that would be only because, well, the federal government would have something to say about that, right? So we're using federal funds to place that modular there, and so the federal government would see it as, as, as their property, with this one exception, with this one exception. So if that modular happened to be, and I can't remember what the length of time is, but after a certain period of time with depreciation, that could stay in the country, but, but prior to that date, no, you're not going anywhere.
That was going to be my question, if it is not kind of part of real property, is there anything in the lease that needs to be modified to protect?
I drafted the agreement that we've got in place now, of course, we have an attorney that can draft any adjustment, so my thinking was that it would be good that if council moves forward with the conditional use permit, we improve this process of them placing the unit there, that we then come back and just make the adjustment to the lease agreement. And then it's clear for anybody in the future.
Mr. Brown?
I drove over to look at this, but it's pretty close to where I live. And in that area, I assume this is what you're talking about? Yes, sir. In that neighborhood, when you go into that neighborhood, there's some apartments there on the left, as you go, Martin Luther King, and, and their apartments, they're very nicely appointed, I think, they look, look pretty good, actually. Once you leave that, there's really nothing but single-family homes. And those single-family homes don't look at all like that. And I, I don't know, I just, I just, it concerns me that those people that own those single-family homes, I'm concerned for them, that, we were told it would have any effect on the property value, but I, I don't really see that. It, it just bothers me that we would put something like this right in the middle of all of those, those single-family homes.
Yes, sir, if I may, I just, I appreciate the comment. Our commitment is to install something that would fit within the motif, I guess, I don't know, of the neighborhood. That picture that you have there is just an example, it's a sample, it shows the size to give you an idea of what we were talking about, so that, so that no one would conclude that it was a two- or three-story unit or anything like that. That is a sixty-eight by twenty, I believe, sample unit, but it, but that's not the exact one, so we can have some, with your approval, we can certainly have some. Well, I'm going to have the input to, you know, for what the selection of the actual unit might be.
Mr. Bramble, for the record, the brick apartments that you're talking about, I assume you're talking about the public housing units, is that right?
I guess so.
Okay.
They're not bad looking at all.
Further questions?
Just a follow-up.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, so your other, you have another site in Morewood, right? One site in Morewood and one in Almarve.
Yes, sir.
Question to Michael, if you all go back, you would go back and work on this lease agreement? Is it? Is it feasible in that lease agreement to contact, I guess it's not, no, it wouldn't be, who is it? Who is your federal folks, federal Head Start?
Well, it comes out of HHS.
Okay, it comes out of HHS.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there, do you think HHS would give you at such time, if, if this stays down there fifteen years of the depreciation, that it would be able to stay with the property? Do you, would they get, I mean, is that something we can put in that?
Um.
Or do you think not?
I, I.
Or maybe I should be asking Bree.
We'll have to look at kind of the term limits on that, just to make sure, how long our lease is. I haven't read the agreement, so we can't agree if, let's just say the term limit's where the mobile home is fifteen years, our lease agreement is on the panel. So we need to make sure that we at least look at the timeframe, where we would commit ourselves to some agreement, before we may actually have that.
Gotcha, thanks.
And, and, and if I may add on to that, as Head Start brands, all of them, are funded in five-year waves, then that, I mean, we hope that we're here longer than that, but it could be another brand team five years from now, that kind of thing.
But Mr. Goldman, I'm sure this is not the first time you all added a modular in years of, you know, so this is not towards rodeo.
Ms. Lowery?
To answer the doctor's comment, I did a lot of concentration with Head Start, and one of the things was to take the kids, you know, in the, where you are, Head Start is there and it's around the kids that go, because so many kids would not be able to go unless it was right there with them. In hopes that we would teach them some things that they learn for the rest of their life. It's not just for the days of Head Start that they get, they get a good start in life, and that's because they get to go right there in their own neighborhood.
I, I appreciate that, and, and you're exactly right, so if I may just add on to that, back in sixty-five is when the program was created, and Head Start was part of our nation's prescription for the war on poverty. And, and there were many other programs that were part of it, but Head Start was one part of that prescription, so as you point out, the idea was to provide those services right there in those neighborhoods that needed those services the most, not just for those two or three or four years, but planting seeds to hopefully germinate and then help everyone, all of us, to become productive citizens in our community.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else have another question? Anyone else care to speak?
I'll say for the record, going back to what Dr. Bramble had mentioned a few, a few minutes ago, the surrounding property owners, I think they would be appreciative to see this added to the current, current facilities.
Well, is there, heck, you could be the doctor?
Further comments? Thank you. Council, we have multiple standards that this must meet, and I will call out each one of them, and you must decide on each one of them before you make a general overall decision.
Yes, of course.
Now, I need to close the public hearing.
Certainly.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number one, the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted and provided. And you can see these on channel, on page three, and you can see their answers to each one of those.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend to approve.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lowery, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. The third, the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, or alternatively, that the use be a public necessity.
Prove.
Motion by Councilmember Lowery.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. And the last one, be in general conformance with adopted plans.
Move approval.
Second. You are moving that it is adopted, it is in compliance with our general land use plan?
Yes, sir.
Now, Councilmember Aldridge makes the motion, second by Councilmember Lowery, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. And the last one, be in general conformance with adopted plans.
Move approval.
You are moving that it is adopted, it is in compliance with our general land use plan?
Yes, sir.
Now, Councilmember Aldridge makes the motion, second by Councilmember Lowery, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number one, the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted and provided. And you can see these on channel, on page three, and you can see their answers to each one of those.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend to approve.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lowery, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. The third, the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, or alternatively, that the use be a public necessity.
Prove.
Motion by Councilmember Lowery.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Four, the proposed use is in harmony with the adjacent uses in terms of location, scale, site design, hours of operation, and operate, operating characteristics.
Move approval. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hughes, second by Councilmember Lowery, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. And the last one, be in general conformance with adopted plans.
Move approval.
Second. You are moving that it is adopted, it is in compliance with our general land use plan?
Yes, sir.
Now, Councilmember Aldridge makes the motion, second by Councilmember Lowery, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. And the last one, be in general conformance with adopted plans.
Move approval.
Second. You are moving that it is adopted, it is in compliance with our general land use plan?
Yes, sir.
Now, Councilmember Aldridge makes the motion, second by Councilmember Lowery, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Move, we approves CP twenty dash oh one.
Now, motion by Councilmember Hall, approved. Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, I see no statement that you have for us to adopt, like Mr. Robinson.
There seemed to be, there was. Your honor, I think there is one.
Okay, in the evaluating evidence, we need to adopt one of those statements. It's on page.
Your honor, I think I have it under number five of the questions, is that not right, Kevin?
You have another one?
The last.
The staff analysis?
Last page in the evaluating evidence.
Yeah, it's typically, you've approved all those, and then you have a motion to approve, and so for each one of those, you just do a motion to approve the, to grant the, CP.
We did, and we did that.
You do not need the material, competent, or substantial motion?
I don't think we actually have to have a motion for that, I think that's just, that's just a guide to help you when you're determining what your evidence is.
Thank you. Moving into agenda adjustments, I have no agenda adjustments, council have any?
Your honor, I would like to move, no, I, I just would like to move the municipal calendar and the monthly reports down after new business, if that's okay.
Got a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to move the agenda, the calendar and monthly records after new business.
Yes.
Second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Under announced delegations, Adam Hyker, LKC Engineering, to discuss long-term plans and options for improvement to the wastewater treatment plan.
Good evening, members of council. Ms. Hall, you were glad to see everybody here.
No, I'm always happy to see you, Adam. Dr. Bramble?
Dr. Bramble. So, I have a relatively new topic that I've been working on, this is in the kind of, of current culmination of some work we've been working on with your staff over the last six to eight months, relative to your wastewater treatment plan, helping you build a foundation for something to continue compliance in the future, as you know, and we've been talking about some regulatory challenges at the wastewater plants, and working with your staff on how we can combat that, how we can improve things, and what's the best comprehensive, long-term solution for your facility. There's a little bit of a story to this, and so I'm going to follow a couple of paths, and I'm going to ask that you bear with me, so we're going to talk, maybe do a little bit of wastewater treatment discussion, and then maybe talk about some electrical stuff, and I will tie that together, so forgiveness for the lengthy letter I've wrote also, so there's just a lot of layers to this. Not asking for any monumental action on your part tonight, this is a topic that we would expect to discuss with you, seek feedback, maybe talk more with staff, come back to you with some other alternatives or some other ideas, and continue to make this a part of the discussion in the coming months or even years after that. There is one piece that I will request at least some feedback on, relative to the funding you just received, and how it relates to the long-term plan. It's not a monumental request, but it's something we think, you know, in example support, that we can maybe make an adjustment to the scope based on what we know right now. So what I'm going to do is each time, I'm going to tell you what slide I'm on, and invite you to tell me if you have any questions. So I'm going to turn to slide two, that says, what is our why? We, we like, we talk a lot in our company about being strategic, so I always feel like it's important for us to answer the question, why are we here? Why are we doing this? So you have, especially in the last eighteen months, you had some compliance challenges that you're playing. It's related to a whole bunch of factors, it's, it's a goal to your staff doing the absolute best they can, and just catching a lot of really rough braces, it relates to the volume of water coming in, and the strength of that water, and the limited ability of your plant now to, to battle that and maintain compliance. And the last two weeks has really been a good example of that. You can see, we saw pictures around town, and Robert Fores lives here, shared a lot of the recon with us, and, and, and I guess really had a hard time. So we're trying to stay ahead of that in the future, and give you a solution that, that will help you combat that. So we were starting last fall, so on slide two, we developed a detailed process model to really dive in to your plant, dive into its history, and, and look at are there ways actively improving things going forward, and this is kind of what resulted in, in the formation of the plan. So what I often do tonight is discuss that plan, talk about the cost, talk about the value, compare to all our alternatives, and, and we can continue to talk about this, no action necessary relative to that tonight. And then bottom, although based on slide two, somehow I would request your feedback in consideration that maybe we need to adjust the scope of the funding that you just received because of all of this. I'm turning to slide three, so just a little wastewater treatment, one of the one here, but I don't have to get too detailed here, but the, the bold and italicized part, the biological process with aeration, is really where we were drilling in to see is there a way to do this, what's the consequences of how the recurrent process works, what limitations does it provide your staff, and how do they try to manage that as best they can, and then how can we make that better? If you turn to slide four, that is the one that has the running flow of your wastewater plant. So this is the way your, your plant operates currently. You have the large football field-sized squares around the edges, those are your aeration basins. Each basin has six aerators in them, you see, in this picture, when this was taken, in every basin, four of them are running, and you can see two of them are turned off, so, and every basin has six. So, and every basin has six. Some important data points, each one of those aerators is 60 horsepower. A couple of them are actually 75 horsepower, but those are kind of anomalies. So, you have about 1,440 horsepower worth of aeration energy consumption going on in your plant. So, we turn to slide five. Just a quick summary here, already touched on, you have a total of 24 surface aerators, that are called surface aerators because they float on the surface. You can see from the picture how they agitate the wastewater to reduce oxygen into the biological process. 1,440 horsepower, we're going to add that in a minute. But they offer, as we drill into the model of your plant, this is what we identify as really a major troublesome point. The limitation of those aerators, and they just offer your staff a lot of flexibility in how to battle changes in inflowing conditions. So, really, in your order, they do not offer a whole lot of mixing value. They are actually fairly mechanically efficient at getting oxygen into wastewater, but if they are turned off, and there are operational reasons that you can be turned off, they are very poor at remixing the wastewater. From an energy efficiency standpoint, so energy in versus oxygen transferred, very low efficiency. We'll talk about that later. And they're not throttleable, so they, you can't make them at 75 or 80 percent. If they're on, well, they're off. And you saw in the picture, how you had, in that picture too, two that were on, two that were off, those are the bases are in, they have to be this water. So, the bottom level on slide five is also important. We go to a lot of wastewater plants across the city, and whenever I pull in and see surface aerators, and I see a fly-hawed John Boone sitting on side, I empathize with the operators. There's a safety and an operational concern as it relates to maintaining this. Sorry. Those, that load, those loads are there for a reason, because they're used, right? On a regular basis, your staff has to get into the basins to work on those. And then not only is it not the safest environment, it's also not the most pleasant environment either. So, we look at, turn to slide six. Working with your staff, we developed a fairly detailed model that shows, not only did we develop a model, we calibrated that model against your actual wastewater influent and effluent data for 2019 to make sure we were properly representing how your staff operates the wastewater plant and make sure that we are, that all the assumptions that we're making are vetted. And it indicates that there is room for improvement within really two conditions, that we can get completely mixed aeration, and that we can offer some throttleability so that the amount of air being input can be changed, all right? So, it's important to maintain an oxygen level within a certain threshold, and variability on that is important for you to maintain, to maintain compliance. So, the bottom level there, a transition of how you aerate your biological process is really what we're talking about right now. So, fine level diffusion, right? That's sort of the main term, it sounds weird. So, I'll over a couple of slides, a couple of pictures, and turn to slide seven. So, one is fine level diffusion. So, this is a picture of a conversion that we did a few years ago. You can see, this is a concrete basin. You see how it's empty, and you see white air piping with black laminating discs that are aligned on the bottom. Now, if you turn it in to slide eight, those discs, the picture on the left, we took the picture on the right, it's courtesy of you. You see what those discs do, all right? So, when you force air into the device, they end, they open, and they flow along like that. So, when we say fine level diffusion, this is kind of what we mean. So, if we turn one more page on slide nine now. And I'm going to pause there for a second, see if you have a question.
This is very similar to what we did at the water treatment plant, or not?
No, I'll say it's not. I know where that question comes from, so the use of air and the use of air to introduce low water would be similar, the reasoning behind why you do it would be different.
Similar system, though. Here's what I'm getting at.
Yes, sir.
We ran into the concrete issue at the water plant.
Right.
Are we allowing for that in this upfront?
Yeah, that's a really good question, and you are absolutely right to ask it. So, some interesting facts about your, the football field-sized basins we saw on one of the previous slides. The bottom of those are actually not concrete. The bottom of those are actually what we would believe to be packed in clay. So, you do these one at a time. As you get each one into, we went back to the stone in them, and then we put four new concrete strips to hold the air piping close. So, we might be depending on very much all of the existing concrete. However, I can assure you that any existing concrete that we did, we would absolutely test and check to make sure. Other questions? Okay, so I'm on slide nine. So, what are some benefits of this high-level transition? There really are two major, well, I'll just kind of give three major benefits here. One, the system will be sized to maintain a completely mixed condition all the time. So, the concept of settling in dead spots would no longer be an issue. Number two, air supplied by mechanical blowers. And these are high-volume, low-pressure mechanical devices that can be throttled, all right? It can speed up, it can speed down, and so it will vary the amount of air being introduced at any given time. And then I'm pretty, talking about operator safety and operability, these mechanical blowers are located in a building to be constructed beside the basins with piping that would be piped over into the aeration basins. So, there's no longer any mechanical equipment inside the basins themselves. So, from an operator safety standpoint, this is a much more attractive, this is general operator conditions, much more attractive solution.
We had to go through a large sludge removal recently down there. This will eliminate that in the future?
This will eliminate that in the future. However, in the capital cost of such an implementation, you would have to get these basins empty. So, we're accounting for that cost that would have to be done as far as any kind of project to go on down there. Question?
Just follow up.
Yes.
If we would have... I'm just doing step-by-step, so I know we've had that sludge problem. We'd have to completely empty them before we could, before we could start, not, the new one would have to be done, would it not, before?
So, you do, you have four basins, and you would do this one at a time. So, one at a time, you would empty, remove all the sludge, make the conversion, and then bring it back online to the process, and you're good to the next. There's no sludge removal after that, moving forward. After that, there is no sludge removal from the basins. Right? Wastewater plants, by nature, you're taking the solids away from the water, right? So, in theory, on a larger basis, you always have a solid disposal cost as to it. Okay, so I'm on, at the bottom of slide nine, the biggest value here is this provides a more efficient, more reliable biological process across a broader range of implosion flows and strength. So, blow flow high, blow low, should ring, blow should ring with this system more. So, let's turn to slide 10, where it says, "Other benefits of fine level diffusion." So, the top level there, this is important, so as we built this model, we suspect, this is what we confirmed it with the model, that you have four basins now, you really only need two basins if you were to transition this process to meet your requirements or to treat to your capacity. So, that offers you a lot of flexibility to improve the overall process of the site. So, what we would do, working with your staff, this was a concept that everyone vetted, you would convert two basins to process change, you would convert the other two basins a similar way, but they would be used for equalization. So, you then have 8 million gallons roughly of volume that Brandon and Sean can use to buffer these tremendous peaks that come in. So, you, it's empty when you have a big spike, you open the valve, let it blow in, buffer the big spikes, and then you slowly drain it out and treat it over time. So, that's a big deal, actually. A lot of plants pay a lot of money for equalization, and you would get 8 million gallons worth of it with this kind of project. The bottom level there and the top, the top, the bottom level, is a small value, and it's long-term in the future, but because transitioning this, you only need two basins to treat the wastewater, it gives you two more. And then in the future, at some point, you need to expand this plant. The cost of that expansion would be much, much less with this kind of system than it would be with your own system.
What are we currently licensed to do today?
Twelve, 12 million gallons a day.
And this will reduce that to eight?
No, this maintains it at eight. This would give you, the project that we are presenting would give you 8 million gallons of equalization volume. So, in most days, over days' worth of time. And equalization is really trying to buffer that three- or four-hour surge that comes in. And that's a good value. So, I'm on slide 10 still in the middle there. So, instead of 1,440 horsepower, the model confirms you can do this with only 600 horsepower. So, about $180,000 using the city's utility rates for this plant, only about $180,000 per year in direct electricity savings with this change in system. And the bottom level is a transition point here, so I'm going to talk about this in a pause for a second. So, changing the horsepower input, the necessary horsepower of the plant, changes the greater vision for your electrical upgrades. And we talked about years one through six of an electrical plant. So, this process changes pretty good, changes the ones you do, and also changes the costs. I'm not going to pause because we're going to kind of pivot and stop talking about aeration, talk about electrical stuff for a minute. Any questions? I'm going to cover this so far. Okay, so let's turn to slide 11.
Ms. Lauder's got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Ma.
I was just wondering, that's what I was about, cutting it down so much. What gives you that variance?
So, it all is relative to the energy input required versus the oxygen transfer of how you're introducing oxygen into the wastewater. And what over horsepower is a function of the volume of air and the pressure that you have, under which you have to provide that volume. And this is, this process has been around for a few decades, and every single time, we've done this a few times, but it's always more energy efficient to use a large mechanical blower than it is to use loading surface aerators. The reason why is it gets a little bit detailed into wastewater treatment, and maybe something to go into tonight, but I can certainly send you some literature on that, or send Michael some literature. Okay, so let's pivot for a second, we're on slide 11. So, some of this is a review. So, 2013, as a result of a week-long failure, the electrical failure plan, you worked with your electrical team and your electrical consultant and developed a six-year plan that was, A, the goals were to rehabilitate, replace old equipment, and improve, significantly improve the efficiency and reliability. So, that plan was not a process-oriented plan. It was not aimed at improving how you treat the wastewater. It was aimed at maintaining reliability to eliminate or reduce the chance of another failure. If you remember, we're almost through with year one of the plan. In fact, that project's wrapping up shortly. And years two and three of that plan, we applied for funding that we received approved this past February. So, one of the things we're going to talk about in a few minutes is how we might want to change that years two and three electrical scope in the funding we just received. As we were going through this aeration process plan with your staff, we also engaged Southeastern Consulting to talk to them about the change in process, change in infrastructure, change in electrical loads, and let them give us feedback on how their six-year plan would then change to accommodate a change in process. Remember, the 2013 plan was specifically tailored for your current process. So, if we change the process, change the electrical load, change the location of those loads, that's a big piece, that change, they need to take that into account, and we asked them to reconsider. So, the good news is, if you turn to slide 12, there is a significant reduction in the cost of your, in the current market-bound cost of the achieving the overall goals of that 2013 plan. I will say it the same because it's really a fork in the road. If you kept your current aeration process, you would proceed with that 2013 plan. If you wanted to pivot, the upgrades from an electrical standpoint would be quite a different scope. So, right around $3 million construction cost, that's not including contingency and engineering and other soft costs, so pushing around a $4 million long-term cost difference, or sorry, current market value of long-term improvements, same goals. And so, why is it much less expensive? It's two reasons. It's because we have lower horsepower, and it's because those electrical loads are concentrated in one location instead of spread out between 24 different places. Remember, we would take your aeration horsepower and put it in a single spot with blowers and a building as opposed to 24 aerators that are spread across about 28 sites. So, as we start thinking about cost and value, there's a long-term investment in this plant, a change like that is something that we felt, as I mentioned, and your staff felt, was important to make a part of the discussion. Okay, so I'm going to turn real quick to page 13. So, what we did for the analysis portion, or to really get into the, what does this mean? What does this cost? How do we do this? We put together two projects to consider. Project one, which you see on slide 13, covers a comprehensive project that would not only change how you aerate the water, change your biological process as we just discussed, it would perform other upgrades at the site that would complement what, the fact that you no longer need four basins, only have two basins, and give your staff other means and methods to improve treatment and maintain compliance. It also, you see, so the two large pieces of the cost on slide 13 are number one at the top and number five towards the bottom. So, it also would, in this project, cost is a comprehensive electrical upgrade. Basically, is that $4,262,000 from the previous page is included in that project cost. So, $16 million is an enormous price, a big, that's a big number, right? I, we understand that. So, how does that compare to what you would need to do? We didn't make such a transition, right? That's kind of the, that's kind of the thinking. It's a, well, it's a 16 million, or what do we compare that to? So, we put together, if we turn to slide 14, we put together a parallel project working with your staff that did not transition the aeration process. And it basically, on slide 14, items two, three, and five are the same as the other slide, the different numbers, but same writing. And then number four is the $7,179,000 that you saw before. And then you throw in contingency and engineering, and you add it all up to $12,000. Also not a small number. In that project two, on slide 14, there's no, none of that is aimed at a process improvement, right? So, none of that is aimed at improving how you treat the wastewater given your staff or more in addition to combat the variances that they're seeing right now. So, 16.7 versus 12, well, those are both big numbers, one more than the other. So, let's turn to slide, let's turn to slide 15. So, what's the benefit of project one versus project two? First and foremost, we wanted to make sure we were recommending or developing a project, not recommending it yet, developing a project. not recommending a project, developing a project that would significantly improve how your staff treats the wastewater. So it's a comprehensive project that it really is intended to not just transition the aeration process, but it really upgrade everything in the wastewater plant that you would need in the foreseeable future. So all the electrical upgrades, supervisory and control systems, the aeration process, and some other components that go along with that. We talked about flow equalization, that's in the second bullet. So then we get into some numbers. So earlier, there were two numbers I showed you. One was the change in aeration process would result in $180,000 a year, it's actually about $183,000 a year in direct electrical savings. And then your maintenance costs, you budget about $60,000 every single year to maintain and repair the 24 floating aerators. So that would be swapped with about $20,000 a year to maintain, to maintain the blowers and everything to go with it. So 180 plus 40 is about $220,000 annually in direct savings. So if you assume a similar interest of funding arrangement you just received, $220,000 a year would average out about $3.5 million in capital costs. So that's kind of how these numbers start to play out. And maybe the bottom bullet, we like to always think is the most important, is a safer and more operating-friendly solution for your staff. So, it's all right, it didn't take as long as I had. Let's kind of sum this up. So if we're on slide 16, so what do we recommend right now? Well, we want to continue the discussion and answer any of your questions, as you have questions in the coming days or weeks, to funnel them to us through your staff, and at your pleasure, we'll come back, we'll talk about this some more. And if it's your pleasure, at some point in the future, if you want to implement such a project, there is funding available that would help with this. Most importantly tonight, with your feedback, we believe there's value in this long-term approach in the project one, as I presented. And so if you, if you agree with that, or if you feel the same way, then the years two and three electrical scope, which is about $3 million worth of improvements that you just got funding for, we think you should pull that from the scope of the project and modify that to only include collection system rehabilitation. So if you remember going back to the fall, when we last kind of talked about phase three, it really had two components. One was about $3 million worth of pipeline upgrades, and the other was about $3 million worth of years two and three electrical upgrades. So we've talked with the funding agency, we've reviewed the documents with them, they've looked at the scoring, and it's really a matrix of how did you check all the boxes to get the funding, and they have come back and said that if you wanted to take the electrical component out, you can do that, you could only spend the $3 million on the collection system, or if you wanted to, you could spend up to the full amount on the collection system. So you don't need to make the latter decision. How much do you spend, or how you don't need to make, but do we want to pull the years two and three from the scope right now? That is something that needs to be made in the near term.
Number one, we don't, we're used to capacity.
Yes, correct.
There are several other installations like this in the state that you've worked with, that we can get some kind of feedback from on how it's worked for them, and
Yes.
And you know why I get into that. We spent some money down there on another change years ago, a previous council did, and it didn't work out well, and that's probably one of the reasons you're standing in front of us tonight, rather than that engineer. And we want to make sure, we even consider this, that this is the way we want to go.
Right.
All right. You know that we got Tucker Town, phase four, and this, priorities. Which one's number one?
Well, that's a hard question.
Putting you on the spot.
Well, I don't know if we've uncovered Tucker Town yet, the full scope of what needs to be done. We've worked with your staff a little bit to have a feel for it. I think that you have an immediate environmental and regulatory issue at the wastewater plant.
Do that one more time.
Yeah, I think you have an immediate environmental and regulatory compliance issue at the wastewater plant. You know, I would put those two, maybe one in 1A. Yeah, I'm not sure if there's one, if what I just presented to you is more important than what I think you really want to do at Tucker Town. And there's, there's a complex financial component to both of those, so I'm not sure if I could really give you a good answer right now, but I
Hard spot being in it. Now look at what council's got to do.
It is a hard spot. Yeah, I understand that.
Ms. Lowder.
One thing that we can see right off, it's more substantial, and we're looking at, no matter what product we have, is how long will it last? And you can see the one like we have is just floating along. You can see this one is attached, and in a strange way, but it looks very substantial.
Yeah.
And I think those long-term things mean as much as how much it is required.
Yeah. So really good question, and you are correct. If you, yeah, so if you turn to slide 22, and I didn't intend to get into these, but all the pictures are better than words. This was a conversion we did about three years ago for Chapman, a few hours down the road. So the bottom, slide 22, sorry, is a basic of a three-floating area, and if you turn to the next, 24, sorry. 23 is a picture of all the sludge, Mayor, that was in that basin. And the 24, it's the same basin with the, you can see the aeration piping. So Ms. Lowder, you're correct. Your long-term lifecycle cost of the project one that we're presenting would be noticeably less. For one, you have the energy consumption piece to that. For two, your replacement cost of your short-lived assets for the project we're considering, you would be consolidating all of your electrical and mechanical equipment into three large pieces of equipment instead of 24 pieces of equipment. And any electrical mechanical device has a lifecycle, right? It's going to fail in 15 to 20 years, is usually about all you get out of a motor and a propeller turning. So your replacement cost of the transition would be much less. Things like concrete, usually, pipes, diffuser heads, plastics, those last, stainless steel piping, those last 50, 75 years. So that's a good question, and part of the analysis, or part of the financial thinking is what's the lifecycle cost to this?
Ms. Twither.
In college, we discussed the concept of sunk cost economic. Where are we in the electrical work now? And this may not be fair, and may not be a last of it. What has been done there?
I can't, I can't answer that. It's a good question. So you are almost done with year one of the six-year plan. Your contract, contract mission is probably done. I think we're waiting on paving and painting. And the electrical piece of that contract is about $750,000-ish, and a quarter of that, maybe a third of that, would be sunk cost. The other, the other two-thirds, you would need to do even if it was the first project.
Yeah. Well, that was a concern. It's not to say I'm fighting one way or the other, certainly going the most efficient route would be best, but
Right.
I was just curious how much we already spent, if it would be enough to cover.
That's right. Ms. Ferris?
Thank you, Mayor. You heard Adam mention earlier, we've been discussing this with him at the staff level for a few months, so I completely understand, and that's why I wanted to get council lots of time to think about this. It's a massive decision and change of direction. No matter which way we go, it's a lot of money, period. What, and I think Adam, Rob, Sean Whitley, our plant superintendent, Brandon Viler, MRC at the wastewater treatment plant, Judy Redwine, utility director, I think can all tell you that I ask a lot of questions. Certainly, I can't ask all of the questions, but in going through this process and asking questions and going back and running numbers, that's why it's before you. You've not come across any reason to say this is not a very good solution and option. The thing that I'm really excited about, and I understand it's very complex, and Adam's covered this, but just to kind of boil it down, the things I think we're really excited about, one is, when you factor in cost savings over that same period, you have no difference in actual project costs. The biggest, I think, thing for all of us on the city staff is, there is a solution, a way out to what we've been dealing with, with the changing regulatory standards and what we face with what we receive at the wastewater treatment plant, there is finally a solution. Adam mentioned, referenced the 2013 electrical rehab study, nothing wrong with it at all, but things change, and when we've gone back and reevaluate, this comes up to be a good solution. The thing to note is, the path that we're on, Adam's talking about, we're going to spend about $12 million anyway, that does not, as I understand it, that addresses the electrical issues at the plant, but it does not address any of the biological challenges we're also facing. So there'd have to be something done above and beyond that to solve those potential issues. So to, if you think about the electrical path we're on now, then to try and work the biological solution, we're talking about grants and chunks and phases over the length of our careers or lives to finally get out of the SOC situation that we were under for electric rehab, or one we're under now for other issues. So to be able to wrap it in a comprehensive project and solve the problem for, in a shorter time period, with cost savings and about the same amount of money, to make it safer, to have EQ, capacity and ability, it's just, there's been no reason, and again, there's no need for a decision tonight, but just, I think speaking for us at the staff level, this is finally that aha moment where you see some sort of light at the end of the tunnel to get where we need to be rather than just inching along and then having other things happen to us, and rules change. This is really a light at the end of the tunnel for us. So I appreciate council allowing all of us to, Adam and Tom tonight and us to speak about it, because it is something really worth considering, asking more questions. I said I ask a lot, I certainly can't ask a lot. I know council will have a lot of questions, but that's why we wanted to bring that to this point tonight. This is a very exciting opportunity. It still needs a lot of investigation and questions, but it's really exciting for us.
Ms. Hall?
Three things as a follow-up, Adam. Yeah, I had a little smile on my face whenever the mayor said, you know, now while you are here, I just remember those days. So we're glad you're here. I would love so much to get out from underneath the SOC, okay? I mean, it seems like every time we get out of one, we're under another one from somebody else or something else. And I'm sure we're not alone, okay? I'm sure. And that's good to hear, that we're not alone, that we're not the only municipality that continues to be up underneath. All of our systems are about the same age. A question would to you would be, I heard you say we ought to go ahead and pull two and three, pull the money from two and three, okay? But we don't need to do it now, okay? Is what I heard. That might not have been what you said, but why not? Why don't we do that? How much time are we under?
Yeah.
Number one. And the second part of that is, I just heard Mr. Ferris say that we don't need to make a decision tonight, but why not make a decision? Or why not give you, why not lead into that?
Sure.
Okay, so give me that one and two.
Okay. I understand, I think a little bit of the confusion, I think it's on me relative to do you pull it or do you not right now? So we would recommend a decision on removing the years two and three scope from, or phase three funding. Phase three is, I'm just using round numbers, $6 million, $6,156,000, so it's called $6 million. Half of that would be years two and three, half of that is collection system. So if you remove years two and three, then you have, as a council, somewhat committed or already, you know, I'm using the word committed, to a $3 million collection system project. The funding agency has said, we will give the city the latitude, you can spend the $3 million, and that's it. Or if you want to spend up to the $6,156,000 to do other collection system improvements, they will let you do that. So the decision that we would recommend making now is removing the years two and three. What you don't need to decide now is, do you then commit only to the $3 million project, or do you want to consider spending more of that on your collection system? And we will come back to you with working with your staff on if you wanted to spend more on pipelines, where you should spend it, and how much that would cost and what the benefit would be. We'll come back to you in the coming months with that, with that for you to consider.
Because this is not an additional money right now, we've got that money, we've got that latitude
Correct.
With that first, that $6 million.
Correct, yes.
We've got that latitude.
That is correct.
And we might as well put it into the, put it in this stream if it's going to do more good.
Right. Well, I feel to be, you could steward to
Oh, yeah.
To council, it is, it is loan money, and it's not zero percent.
Right.
So there is a financial impact to spending $4 billion versus three, or $5 million versus three. We respect that. So we would recommend if, removing years two and three right now, and then we can come back to you, working with your staff, and give you some recommendations on where you might want to spend more or not.
Mr. Bradley?
I'm just going back through the budget while you were talking, and I see that you're mixing water and sewer and electric and that sort of thing. We're spending $43 million a year on these two elements of our, of our enterprise here. And over the five, four, five years that I've been on this council, we've heard you speak, that sort of thing, and I don't think we have ever had one of our own engineers up here before us to talk about these issues. How many engineers do we have in the budget of $43 million?
We don't have any staff engineers.
No staff engineer. This man makes his living selling us engineering services, and we do not have our own engineer. I find that hard to believe. I mean, I'm impressed with this man, I'll put his name in that sort of thing, and we have fun going back and forth, but he makes his living selling us things like this. Why don't we have an engineer on our staff that would provide us our own source of information? And on a budget of $43 million?
It would probably take multiple engineers, because they wouldn't have the expertise in each of the different fields.
We're talking about a $12 million to $16 million project, and an annual budget of $43 million, and we can't afford our own information.
That's really, I think we need to hear from these other locations that have done this and see how it's worked out before council makes any decision whether to proceed.
With all due respect, I don't know what the hell the difference between bubble confusion and other kinds of diseases. I don't have a clue. Does everybody else know, and I'm the only one who doesn't?
Yeah, based on
You do?
May not, we know, we know the state. With your permission, to answer Ms. Hall's second question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think that was on the, so why, the question was why wait?
Right, 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 right.
Well, this is a wonderful project for the same funding group that has been funding projects that we've been working on for the last four, five years. The next cycle with them is not until September. So if you wanted to apply for their funding, and we would recommend that, I'll tell you in a minute, you would not need to really make a decision on this until August or so. So there's no, there's no use in making a decision now versus then. That would be the only reason. And I think that further staff vetting or council vetting of the non-SEF is something we welcome. In the last four years, we've done this twice, very successful, but once in Chover, as you saw pictures, we just finished one in Axhead about a year ago, but they've worked out great. I'd be happy to talk with their staff and/or do site visits, however that needs to be coordinated, we can facilitate. I see Ms. Hall.
Is the state abandoning the zero percent loan totally?
No, so that's why this would make a great project. So when the state decides how much money you give, and, sorry, when the state decides what kind of money you give, is it, is there any grant, and what's your interest rate? There's a matrix they use, and it looks at only two factors. One is, what's your user rate? use, and it looks at only two factors. One is, what's your user rate for 5,000 gallons? And the city scores relatively low on that compared to the state.
Because we keep our rates low, we get penalized.
Yes, don't shoot the messenger.
Einstein, Einstein.
And then the other matrix is the cost of the project per connection. And so it's the x-axis and y-axis, and wherever you, wherever that data point fits, you plot on the x and the y, and they have different ranges, and you either fall in all loan with a grant, or you get 25% grant, or 50% grant, or even 75% grant. So when we applied for funding last time for phase three, and we knew this when we finished the application, you fell just short of jumping into that 25% grant section. If a $6 million project would have been a $9 million project, you would have scored more than 25% grant. Well, we don't, like, it's appropriate to arbitrarily loan projects. But this project would, for sure, put you in the category to receive grant funds, and if you qualify for grant, then you automatically qualify for zero percent interest. So that's the way the funding program works.
How would we find that out before we make a decision even whether to pursue?
You would not find that out. You would have to apply to find that out. Now, as we've talked before, applying does not commit you to anything. You can always decide that it's not in your best interest at that time to pursue the project. But you would not, you would not find out without applying.
That's a $6 million.
How much are we paying us, even if we got those grants? How much are we talking about? How about money?
To apply, or to?
No, 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 we got it.
I have not, I haven't run the financial, the payback on it.
What are those grants going on?
Usually, the loan funds are 20-year, and it's, the zero percent, so if you take project cost above that 20, it'd be about a million and some change a year in debt on a $16 million project. Sorry, about $800,000.
It's not a grant, it's a loan.
It's a loan, correct.
Yeah, grant, loan, two different things.
Yes, yeah. So this project that we cover tonight would qualify you to receive some grant. So you would fit into the category that you could receive up to 25% of the project cost in grant. And you wouldn't know the answer to that until you apply. It's a function of how many applicants they receive, and how much loan and grant they get appropriated through EPA each cycle, and then they, they assign it as they see fit.
Well, they've been making a big deal of how much they received this year. They had a lot of money this year, so I would hope they would be willing to give a grant.
We would hope so too, yeah, we would hope so too.
Mr. Alvin?
Adam, first of all, thanks for the, thanks for all the slides here. I see on a couple of these where you're talking about, it says basically it's safer for staff to operate and maintain. In your professional opinion, what is the, specifically, what do you mean by that? Like, by doing this project, how does that make things safer for our staff?
Yeah, so if you remember, we, we're big on, on operability. We like operator-friendly, safe solutions. We're big believers that if Sean and Brandon are happy with what we're doing, then usually, Mr. Ferris and you guys are going to be happy to. So when we visit your plant, and I kind of told an anecdote of this earlier, and we do a lot of plants that have floating aerators, and we see a boat leaned against the side of the concrete, we know what that boat's for, and this is open, and the base is, sorry. So when those aerators, on a regular basis, they have to be cleaned, they'll get rags in the envelops, or they'll have issue, overtended issues with the motors. And not every time, but a lot of times, your staff has to get into a boat and paddle out to the aerators and correct whatever issues they're having through their own.
Brandon said they had to do it today.
Sean, I can show outside of those, but.
Not Brandon.
PM once a month, and you have to go to each individual area, get out on it, raise it, clean it. And that's, 24 PM on a P M.
How many times?
24 hours.
Each one has to be cleaned once a month.
So it's a, anytime you have to put staff in a boat like that, even if it's clean water, it's a safety concern, certainly is in that situation, and it's uncomfortable, sure, for obvious reasons.
Good.
Further questions?
Mayor, I just, I really want us, I mean.
I think we're hearing that we want to move, you want us to make a decision on two and three tonight.
That's our recommendation.
To pull, to pull two and three.
Council, he's recommended that we pull phase two and three tonight and hold it until he can bring, bring us back some numbers and we can make a decision later.
So who?
What is your wishes?
So who?
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Lauter, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Adam, I think you have some work to do to bring back a lot of numbers to us and a lot of information, including some people we can talk to about the process and everything.
Well, thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. We appreciate the opportunity. We enjoy coming here, we enjoy working with your staff, and you, so we think this is a good idea. We have, so if you have any questions, feed those through Judy or through Mr. Ferris, and we'll be glad to answer them. I'll send, we sent Judy a 18-page synopsis, photograph synopsis of what we did in Chover three years ago, step by step by step. So it's similar to the pictures you see in the back, but probably more. I'll send that so he can share it with you, you can see, you know, step by step how we did it.
That makes sense.
Yeah, this is very good, very, very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Moving on, administrative reports, number seven, update on census 2020.
Sweet judge.
Good afternoon. I'd like to start off by apologizing. I didn't realize that we weren't running the monitors tonight, so I had a presentation that we could all go through. Would you all mind if I came around and gave you a printout of that?
Mayor, get ready.
Is that what we have in our?
We've got this.
You guys had the handout for the updates due to COVID. This did not make the agenda package, and that is my fault. I thought we would have the monitors tonight.
Do not ask for forgiveness or say that you need it.
If you just leave them, do the one that.
Thank you.
So I just have a brief update for you guys tonight. What I'd like to do is show you where we are at right now as far as numbers go and the response rate in our community. I'd also like to analyze a map that we have inside the presentation, and shows basically different areas in Almaral of how they're responding to the census. I'd also like to show you guys some, some operational changes that have happened due to COVID-19, some things have been put off for later, which is actually kind of a good thing, we have more time to do things. I'd also like to show you how we've kind of accommodated to a lot of different changes in those operations as a city, and what we're going to be doing in the future once things open back up and everything. So on first slide here, I've got the response rate update, basically showing where we stand inside of Stanley County here. I've highlighted Almaral, we're at 57.3% of the response rate. That number has been quite stagnant for some time now, since the census operation offices have been closed. There hasn't been any physical community outreach from them, which has pretty much left the numbers where they are for the past month or so. But we currently rank fifth in our county as far as response rate. Stanley County sitting at 58.6 as a whole, and the state of North Carolina is at 56.7. So we are about a point above state average, which I would consider a success. So on the next slide, I've printed out a map here, which is basically the census tracts that make up Almaral as a city. You will notice that a lot of the census tracts span outside of our city limits, so that does skew our city limits numbers just a little bit, but as a, as a whole, it's basically counting all of us. The lowest response tracks, those are actually the yellow ones on this map. I've outlined those as east Almaral, which is east of 740 and north of 2427. Most of that is outside of the city limits, but it does encompass quite a bit inside. Also, just south Almaral, which is bound by South First Street, 2427, and East Main. So that's mainly our Amherst, Leonard, MLK Boulevard, all that good stuff down there. Our highest response tracks are basically north Almaral between Montgomery Avenue to Prospect Church, all that dark blue and.
If you don't, if this is a census, then it implies you don't know how many people are there. How many in a percentage response?
That's a good question.
So I believe that they base all this on historical data of how, how houses responded 10 years ago, and also the American Community Survey, which comes out on an annual basis. And I think that's how they do all that pinpoint. I'm not quite exactly sure what all they do, but as a, as a whole, I think that's.
The county's curious. I wonder if Almaral is 28001 area, zip code, area.
I believe it's made up of two, the 28002 being mostly outside of the city limits there, but.
Two is a close office.
Right. So as a whole, I believe it's 28001.
It's a large area, there's a lot out there outside of the city.
Say 28001 has 26,700 people in it.
Right.
The city of Almaral only has 16,000. So almost half the people have accounted to live in 28001.
So on the next slide here, we have our census operational adjustments. Obviously, we've heard a lot about COVID-19 and the coronavirus and how it's affected all of our operations, but essentially they're adding two months on, on top of the normal schedule. In your handout, you'll see in detail where things were supposed to be at this time and where we're at now. Some important outlines from the handout are self-response phase, which we're in right now, where everybody should be responding to the census, whether they get it through the mail, or respond online, or by phone. We now have until October 31st for the self-response phase. Group orders, which was completely suspended due to coronavirus, is now extended to September 3rd. This is where the numerators will actually go out, drop off the questionnaires, and meet with those individuals that are in group orders to make sure that they're all counted. The field offices actually just reopened today. So our census partner, who has been incognito the past couple months, is now back with us and helping us again on our outreach. Update leave, update leave is when the numerators will actually show up door to door. They're not going to be forcing responses this time, but they're going to be dropping off information such as the questionnaire and urging you to respond yourself, just to help our response numbers. Lastly, the non-response follow-up, which is when the numerators come out knocking on your door to basically force a response to the census. That's going to start on August 11th, and it will go until October 31st. So accommodating these operational changes, our last weekly county meeting, which we held in person before everything shut down, was on March 10th, and shortly after that, everything did shut down. But this, this meeting was one of our big successes. This is where we actually solidify all of our community outreach, basically what we're going to do in the community. We planned on making appearances at the Almaral Bonanza and a lot of other community events, like the Senior Center and everything of that, and that was, that was obviously forward. So, which brings me to my next point, the public and private closures. Basically initiated some new strategizing from us. We had to take a step back, see how we're going to reach out to the community and get people to respond to the census. The termination of census field operations stifled our ability to access appropriate resources. We were getting quite a bit of merchandise from our census partner, basically coloring books, notepads, pens, paper, all that good stuff that we can give out to the community that urges people to take it home and gather response. But the extension to the census operation will allow us more time to continue our outreach. So what we've been doing in this time that we haven't been able to go out physically in the community and educate, we've actually made appearances at the Second Harvest Food Banks. I believe we had one at the U R E Commons not too long ago. Shortly after that, they had one in Oakboro, which I made an appearance to because I lived right down the road and I was in quarantine. So we've also teamed up with Almaral Parks and Rec for the distribution of school lunches at Amherst and the, and the Waddell Center. We've had a lot of the merchandise, the coloring books and the bags and the pens, stuff that the kids would take home and enjoy. We've been giving those out with the school lunches. Judy's actually given me a lot of opportunity to do utility bill mailouts and messages. On the right side of this slide here is one of the examples that we sent out with all the utility bills in the city. Lisa's also actually really helped out with the increased social media outreach. We've been sharing a lot of census material on our Facebook page, and I've noticed all the other departments have been helping out with that too. I've seen police department, Parks and Rec, and our main Facebook page have been sharing stuff. The Census Partnership Specialist is supplying us still with more, more material. He's actually getting it shipped over as opposed to meeting up with us and everything. So we're still getting some stuff in, just not as much as usual. I'm trying to keep up with the demand of the school lunches that we're giving out, and we're kind of running out of merchandise with how many lunches that we're giving out on a daily basis. As restrictions are lifted as we go into phase three, our physical community outreach and census field operations will definitely increase, and we'll be going out to those events in the community again. I would like to conclude this slide, and here's the privacy confidentiality, basically ensuring that all census information that you put online, by phone, by mail, is all secure and safe. They're held by Title 13 and U S Code to keep all information that you put in secure and safe. And that is what I have for you today.
Originally, they were having a hard time hiring people that would be going door to door. How is that going? Have you heard?
So they, they got everyone they needed for Stanley County right at the time where things shut down. So they actually had to furlough those people. They're, I think that they're still staffed up to an extent, but they just opened up today, and I guess I'll be reaching out to my partnership specialist tomorrow to see kind of where everything is.
Question, Ms. Hall?
I just, Jake, for folks that watch this, that may be watching it live right now, I want you to tell them, us, what you do for the city, and that you, and explain to them that this is not all that you do for the city, this is what you're, so that folks will know that you're, that you don't work for the census, that you work for us, if you'll do that.
Right, so I definitely, I don't work for the census bureau. I'm the devil coordination specialist for this. I do a lot with plan review, coordination, subdivision administration, and G I S, lots of many good things. Kevin could expand on that quite a bit, but that's mainly what I do for the city. This is one of my extra tasks that I've been granted, and I've enjoyed it for the most part. It's been a change of pace for me.
Thank you very much. You've done a great job. Thanks so much for your energy.
Mr. Alvin?
If you'll actually kind of follow up from what Dr. Brandon asked, how accurate do we feel this information is going to be? I think in one of the last meetings, maybe a couple meetings ago, I asked a question, how do we make sure that the information that we're gathering is correct? And I think somebody said, this is just honesty. We just, we're just asking people to be honest when we fill this stuff out. So it looks to me like, I guess that's the only way to do it. But when you think about how important this information is for future, for, we're talking about for political positions and all this, various other things, it just looks to me like we have some better way to solidify and make sure that the respondents are giving us correct information. But again, how you do that, I don't know. I just wish there was a better way. Because what was it that you, I asked you a moment ago about, from 10 years ago, some, some kind of information was taken? What did you ask Chris?
I believe he asked what, I'm sorry. I think that you asked that based on the response rates that we're getting now, how do they base, basically the entire population, how do they know we're only getting 57, 58% of that entire population? My answer to that, to the best of my knowledge, was I believe that they're basing it off of information that they had 10 years ago about population trends, and then also they work with the American Community Survey, which comes out on a yearly basis, which kind of keeps our yearly population somewhat up to date.
Yeah, I think we have to do this, but I think there's a lot of smoke in here.
I put drugs that brew in every area of our government, trying to find out a way to do it. And apparently, no one has, has come up with anything. I mean, the people high up the government, not us necessarily, but.
I think that's an important point, how we just remind council that, I mean, this is something that, you know, the day's not doing, the county's, I mean, it's something that we have to do as a country. And I think there's some very valid questions, but, I mean, I just reminded, we're just trying to do it according to how they say, trying to get the best response we can and everything, so we get stable county and Almaral working and developing the census.
If I can address the honesty question, there's no telling what, what all they do with all that information that comes in. I'm sure it's a lot of different information. I know that they do hire a whole team of people in each regional office that are solely dedicated to taking these responses in and matching and comparing them for duplicate responses and/or fake responses. It's based off of basically names, dates, all that kind of stuff that comes in. I believe that they start matching all those, those duplicates and everything in the August to October before they deliver this information to the president. And I believe that's when we'll kind of see a correction in a response rate. At least I would.
Maybe if we could have respondents to swear to life on those, have them pull it out.
Well, Jay, I believe it is technically illegal on the census.
I agree with you.
What's going on now? Is it illegal?
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Number eight, update on the ceasefire rating.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager, staff members, and great citizens. I'm pleased to be here in front of you this evening to let you know where we are on ISO. In March, March 11th, ISO North Carolina State Fire Marshal Office came in, and they came in to rate the fire department as it appears, not only to citizens, but to fire departments of like size. They came in to measure the emergency communications as far as how we operate, department operations, how we operate holistically, as far as response recovery, and then staff, community risk reduction. Staffing is also part of that, and there's some other things, but those are the three major categories in which they rate. Rating is graded from 10 to 1. 10, of course, we're looking at the, ISO does not recognize you as a functional human. 1, of course, is the best. This evening, I'm proud to tell you that the City of Albemarle Fire Department received a class rating of 3. We reduced our response rating, our ISO rating, from a 4 to a 3. This is huge. It's not only huge for the fire department, but it's also huge for the citizens and basically businesses that are looking to come into the confines of Albemarle. It reduces the insurance task and increases a level of comfortability. So on behalf of the fire department, thank you for what you do, and at this point, I'd like to present Mr. Ferris with ISO class 3 rating.
Thank you very much. Chief, thank you, and please tell the firefighters, thank you also.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I think all that's worthy, and I agree with you, but should we not acknowledge our past chief also, because he was there a part of the year, okay?
Yes, this is a whole team approach. I agree that it was a team approach, the past chief and all the firefighters. It's a team approach to arrive.
I think that's where you recognized one and didn't do the other, so I thought...
I didn't call anybody by name.
Ma'am?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
The firefighters that you have here are second to nothing. Past leadership has put into place that opportunity for not only them to be recognized at that point of a 4, but to bring them forward to a 3. Our obligation now is no different than the obligation we had previous, and that is to protect the citizens regardless of naming who, but delivering everything that we have. So based on the past administration, based on the current operations as far as we are, and the future in which we have to reach for, again, I say thank you. So, yes, ma'am, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a little bit of information, either Chief Bruton or Michael, have we ever had a 3, or how long has it been since we had a 3, or just for...
I don't know. No, I don't think, to my recollection, have we ever been a 3, and I don't, I think our last rating, don't hold me to this, was probably done maybe when Chief McDaniel was still chief. So we've had Chief McDaniel, Chief Oak, some interim periods, and then it was 15 years.
15 years.
That's... Yes, sir. And Chief Bruton, just for the listening audience, based on your comment about they're going to hear that part about saving money on their homeowners and so on, I guess just for the record, tell the listening audience when they might see them savings, probably a little bit.
That's a good question. When they look at the overall savings, going into calendar years, going into budget years, it just truly depends on how big the household, and what the vulnerability is. So people will have different savings. It may be minimal, it may be extended beyond, but I can't tell you exactly how much or what, but it's a significant jump. And where we have to look at, and what we have to look at, is the opportunity for business to come in, because they search out, businesses search out for those departments that are ranking 3, 2, and 1.
Yeah, stay right there. So following up on Ms. Lauter's comment, the day that, it must have been that you got the letter, or Michael got the letter, I think he probably sent out an email that said, we've just gotten the notification that we've gone from 4 to 3. Later that day, I was down at the sweet shop, and I said to Sean, have you heard? And he said, yes. So if it has been 15 years, then for sure it has been the last administration, or Sean is chief, and his battalion chiefs, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, that have helped to get us where we are. So thank you for acknowledging that, and thanks our current and former firefighters that we have out there.
Chief, also.
I think one thing that we, and we may already be doing it, but if we haven't, we need to make sure that Mr. Don, all of our teams know what we've accomplished, so we can put it out in any kind of media or any kind of literature when we meet with potential businesses. To the chief's point, this might be a little tool that we can use to bring business in, and I think it's a huge accomplishment, so it's something we definitely need to get out to the public, whether it be Facebook or publication, however we need to do it, we need to make sure that everybody knows that we're now an ISO 3 rating.
Information, we do it over the chamber, so...
Yeah. And just for the record, I don't know, I might be taking the message wrong, but I wanted it to be known here. We congratulate Chief Bruton, Car Chief Oak, and the past interim chief that we have on board.
Yes, sir.
Now, that's congratulations to all. No, I don't think, no, one, along with the firefighters.
That's right.
Everybody.
Number nine and 10 have been moved to number 11. Consider agreements related to the City of Albemarle receiving disaster recovery funds for February severe storms.
That's how far the consent is.
12 is consider agreements related to the City of Albemarle receiving disaster recovery funds for COVID-19. 13, consider approval to renew phone system service lease. 14, 2015 ordinance to amend the police headquarters project budget. 15, ordinance 2016 to create a project budget for the SCBA grant in the fire department. 16, consider bids for the liquid alum and liquid caustic produced at the water treatment plants. 17, report on surplus sales. And 18, consider resolution for capital reserve funds for sidewalk improvements. Does anyone want to pull anything from that? If not, we'll entertain a motion for all of them.
Number 18.
Number 18, okay. I'll entertain a motion that we approve 11 through 17. Question by Councilmember Aldridge, second, by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, question carries. Number 18, consider resolution for capital reserve fund for sidewalk improvements. Mr. Bramble?
I know we approved something apparently in August of 19, August of 19. The principle behind this, and I'm not sure I realize what we were doing quite at the time, and I want to make sure I got this right. Say I have a lot that's 150 feet long. I want to put in a sidewalk. Herefore, I paid the city $5,000 or what have you, and I got a sidewalk. The way I read this is that by sending up this capital reserve fund, if I wanted a sidewalk 150 feet and it costs $5,000, I would pay the city $5,000, and I may or may not get a sidewalk, depending on how long it takes for some other, my neighbors, to pay into that fund. Am I right on that? And I wouldn't have any people who are going to just arbitrarily pay $5,000 and have no clue as to when they're going to get a sidewalk. Is that right?
Yes and no. First of all, it's optional. You can put the sidewalk in as part of the development, or you can pay into the fee and lieu, and the fee and lieu goes into a district. We have five districts across the city, so it is guaranteed that money is going to be spent in an area around your development right there, and you only pay in 75% of what the, 75%, I can't remember if you agreed on, 75% of that. So it's an optional thing.
So you're guaranteed that I would get a sidewalk if I put the money in?
Not right there immediately. You're paying for a program to have sidewalks installed at a discount.
If you, you're required to do one or the other. So if you wanted the sidewalk, then you installed the sidewalk. If you say, I don't want that, I'll pay less, go build a sidewalk wherever. That's why it's a lower amount.
And we've had several people that have chose to do the fee and lieu rather than actually put them in, because it made more sense.
So prior to that, the option, there was no option other than you must install the sidewalk, and that was the cost. So for those that don't want to do that, there's a lower amount, then that's where we start this fund. They choose not to put it in front of their property as they develop. This is during the time of development, not if somebody were to come back at their existing place and say, well, I'd like a sidewalk. That's a different situation. This is at the time of development.
Ms. Lauter, you have a question?
I don't understand that rule.
It was just an option to give people the ability to not put the sidewalk in and pay the full price, and they would give us the money to allow us to put sidewalks in where we could make more sidewalks rather than just a little 150-foot stretch. You may be doing a neighborhood or an entire block or something like that.
The common argument we got was, just as the mayor said, is if you have a piece of new sidewalk here, and then a new sidewalk, and another sidewalk, the idea being that you pay into it, and then the city would actually go in and install a longer stretch that was actually usable all at once. And also in terms of long-term maintenance, if you put it all at the same time and everything, so it would become available to be replaced and maintained and stuff, a little bit easier to take care of with that on a maintenance approach. So there's a couple advantages to it.
I understand you can pay them that $5,000, then we get a sidewalk.
Well, I mean, ideally, long-term, and once everybody pays in, then they will be installed throughout that district.
Mr. Bramble, here you go.
You can pay, Chris, the money and have a sidewalk if you want it.
Yes, it's entirely...
...for the city.
No, you pay your money, and you can have a sidewalk. If you want it, you can have it.
Only when you're required in the ordinance, there's certain circumstances with new development. Only when you're required to have a sidewalk as part of that does this really come into play.
I didn't pick up that.
So it's an option. It's incentivized by charging a little bit less than what you would normally pay to put it in yourself.
I got a sidewalk, so maybe I shouldn't worry. Don't worry about people who don't have sidewalks.
Thank you, Kevin.
So do we need to...
We need to...
I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Hughes, second, by Councilmember Hall, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Moving into new business, number 19, consider the city council summer meeting schedule. Typically, we only meet once in June, July, and August. We're going to have to meet twice in July because of some, I mean, June, because some more things coming to us at the second meeting. If we go on a four-week schedule, you would move your July meeting to the 13th and your August meeting to the 10th. You would meet every four weeks then up until Labor Day, and then get back on our regular schedule if council wishes to continue the one time in July and one time in August.
So is our second meeting this month on the 15th like normal?
It is, because we have several public hearings coming down.
That'll be 6 o'clock or 7?
That will be 7, because the public hearings, I'm sure, have already started to be announced, but we don't want to change that with public hearings have to be advertised.
Whoa, 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 whoa. So it's not public hearings that we have set.
No, they come straight from planning board. Remember, council gave them authority to set them themselves.
But planning board does not meet till June 4th.
It's Thursday.
That's June 4th.
Kevin, has anything been advertised?
No, and we're still trying to figure out the exacts. The developer said that he would, as long as he's hurt by July, he's okay on that.
So you...
I was going to speak with Mr. Ferris about that tomorrow in terms of scheduling that and everything, whether it's the 15th or the 18th or 19th.
And that's the reason I just said, originally, it was my understanding, that's the reason I had this calendar held off, and the department reports held off until after we did business, because it was my understanding that really the reason we were needing a June 15th meeting was because of the budget, and if it was passed tonight, then that doesn't, then that would include that. Because I didn't think we, as a council, had set anything public, a public meeting yet, I mean, any public hearings.
The complaint I had received from some of council was they wanted this to occur in June, but if the developer is all right with July, I'm sure we would be all right.
Whoa, 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 whoa. We shouldn't be, from my understanding, the only reason we were doing a June 15th meeting is because of the budget.
No, council got, some of council got a complaint about us not having a May meeting and wanted it to occur in June. So we had set this June meeting thinking that that was going to come, that public hearing was going to be that night, so it may not be going to be that night. You think it's not going to be that night now, Mr. Robinson?
I'm just going off of what, you know, what we've been told. It's up to you. We can push and try to get everything in there, but it is going to be cramming, trying to cram an awful lot of stuff together in short term and short term around here.
Well, we can leave it on the schedule, and then Mr. Ferris, the season doesn't have anything, we can cancel it, just like we've done the last couple of meetings.
Well, we're going to have to have the June 15th meeting now, because that was my understanding that the developer was in a rush, so we took that opportunity that if there was not a full quorum here tonight, and somebody participated by phone and had to have a later reading on the budget, it would be the 15th. That's not happening now, but because it looked like that was, there was going to be a meeting on the 15th no matter what, we now have to come back with the resolution to approve the water rate schedule per the budget, the electric schedule, the COLA for employees, and street assessment rates. We do have to get those done...
In June.
...as before the start of the fiscal year. Correct.
So we will have the June 15th.
If that's all there is, it could be fairly quick.
Because that will be the 7th and 8th.
Correct.
Unless council sets something different. There's no public hearing on any of that that you've advertised, Mr. Ferris?
I'm sorry, say that again.
There's no public hearings that you've advertised on any of that, or public notice?
Nothing that I've advertised or I'm aware of.
We can do 6 or 7.
I'll both do 6 o'clock.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilmember Aldridge that we meet at 6 o'clock on July 15th.
June.
June 15th, June 15th. Second by Mr. Whitton, further discussion.
That's what I've already got on the schedule. Didn't we get a schedule at 6 o'clock?
Not June 15th.
All in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Now, let's go back, question carries. Now, let's go back to July. If we stay at four weeks, it would be July 13th and August 10th, and I'm assuming by changing that other one, you would want this in at 6 o'clock also.
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion if that's your desire. Motion by Councilmember Aldridge that we change to July 13th and August 10th at 6:00 PM, second by Councilmember Lauter, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number 20, discussion of the 2020 Almaw Christmas Parade dates. Harley, is Ms. Alman here?
She was asked to be here.
Officially, I hadn't been, I saw him.
It has changed. About three years ago, roughly, we changed to a Saturday morning, and it's on, Michael, do you know the date? It had been being the 2nd Saturday.
Yes, the 2nd Saturday.
2nd Saturday.
That's late, has been. I think at 10 o'clock, 12.
10:30.
10:30, okay.
10:30.
What normally we had done was ask the merchants, and the merchants had agreed to that, so we tried to do what the merchants wanted, but Mr. Bramble had brought up several times that we needed to change the date to earlier. Ms. Alman?
So let me tell you the reason it's on here, and it really wasn't on here for the parade as much as it was downtown Christmas, okay? On May 20th was our last Special Events Committee meeting, and that is a committee that we, whoever we is, pulled together to do special events in Albemarle. At that meeting, on site were Lisa and Nikki and Peter Shudo. and Peter Shudo and a couple of other committee members. I did not go to the actual Niven Center that night. I joined by telephone because I'm trying to really stay away or stay away from folks. We met at 6:00 and about 6:30 that night. I think Joy had another meeting, and she got on the meeting or she got there and said, "Can we add downtown Christmas to the agenda?" And so we started talking about downtown Christmas and the parade and the tour of homes. And in the midst of all of that, the tour of homes came up because I had seen... I mentioned it to the committee. I said, "I saw a post where the tour of homes was being discussed if even they were going to do it." These are three events that have happened regularly. And it's always been my understanding they were part of what ADDC did. And then it was mentioned that there was some memorandum of understanding that ADDC didn't do all of them. And I said, "We need to bring this before council. We need to know who's doing what and who's responsible for what, et cetera, et cetera." I saw that the Christmas parade date had already been set. And I said, "Well, wait a minute. If it's not ADDC, how is it set?" So I just said, "We need to bring this before council, and we need to talk about these three things." But specifically, we as a council and anybody working thereof needs to know who's responsible for what. So I said to Michael Ferris, after I got the MOU from Joy and sent it to each of you all, I said, "Who's responsible for this? We need to talk about it." Because what I have been hearing is two things. Christmas parade is too late, and the downtown Christmas is too early. And I hear this from all kinds of people that we don't need to do a downtown Christmas before Thanksgiving. And if it's council's decision, then we need to talk about it. So that's the reason it's here tonight. There's been some talk about doing the parade and the downtown Christmas on the same night. If we get people down here, or the same afternoon or evening, or the same morning. So that's the reason it's here, okay? Now I'm going to shut up because I've gotten at least attention drawn to it. So, Mayor, that's where we are.
Go ahead, Joy.
Okay, yes. In meeting with the events committee, and just to go back, I mean, the setting of the dates for these holiday events has been an ongoing topic for many, many years. In 2016, when I was still the part-time assistant, it was told to our office that we were to move the downtown Christmas date to the Friday before Thanksgiving. So we have followed through with that ever since. We have gotten numerous comments from people in the community that they believe that it is too early. They don't feel comfortable celebrating Christmas before they cut the turkey, so to speak. I did a survey back in 2018 just to get feedback about the event. And at the end, where you have comments, where people come in and just give general feedback, several, several, several comments from people saying that they would be happier to have the event after Thanksgiving. So if this is an event that is supposed to benefit our stores and benefit our retailers, as someone who has worked in retail, retail history that I've had, it's been drummed into me that the customer is always right. So if these are our customers, and this is what they're saying, that's, you know, I feel like that gives us pause to review that date. So I appreciate council taking the time to consider that. I think something else to consider, if we are looking at these dates and looking at doing something differently than what we've been doing, I think it is important that I canvas our downtown businesses to see if they have a preference. We did that several years ago when we made the decision to change the Christmas parade date. And the business owners appreciated that they got to be heard and got to contribute their feedback. So I am willing to gather that data for you. If that is something that you want me to inform with.
Mr. Bramble, I think you were one of the key ones that talked about moving these dates. So you have any comments?
Yeah, I do. I was in business 15 years in Concord. It's a different town, I know, but that's my experience. We had the Christmas parade on the Saturday before Thanksgiving. Zillions of people showed up. And never once was it too cold. And that is a fact. The closer you move toward Christmas, away from Thanksgiving, the colder it's going to be. And that does have a direct effect on how many people go. You talk about... Talking about soliciting the opinion of downtown businesses. Over time, what's happened, they disappeared for whatever reason. And I'd have trouble giving you 10 names of downtown businesses that would be even affected by this. So what we've got to do is hopefully, we've got enough yield capacity. We've got to redo our Christmas thing in such a way that we get more people downtown and hopefully get more businesses downtown that would have an effect here.
Well, I've said this for probably the last two or three years I've been sitting here, however, how long I've been on council. One of the good things I think we did last year is we started throwing out candy. I don't know if anybody else on council heard any comments. I got a lot of good comments about that. But my thing is, regardless if we do it before Thanksgiving, after Thanksgiving, the week before Christmas, whenever we do it, it only makes good sense. Because if you look at the attendance at the Christmas parade over the last several years, it's not luck, you know? I can remember, I can remember as a kid, we would have... One of our family members would be downtown at 3:00 in the afternoon to park the car. Because if you didn't, you were on the backside of the old man's building, barely seeing the parade. So what I'm saying is, I think we need to really consider combining the two events, the downtown Christmas and the Christmas parade on the same afternoon. You have the Christmas parade at 4:00 or at 4:30, and then just let that dovetail right into a downtown Christmas. I mean, what do you have to say?
Ms. Lowry?
Somehow, I thought the issue was about the information I got is who was responsible for what. And somebody answered that question, and then motion we got.
Those two events, years ago, were handled by the ADDC. I think in that memorandum of understanding, that's not the case. They don't handle all these events yet. Having said that, still the coordinator for these events is our Main Street Director, and Joy serves in both roles. So whether it's ADDC or whether it's a city event, all of it is coordinated through the ADDC office or the Main Street Director. Same person.
That's what it ought to be.
As far as the Christmas parade, I remember some comments about who will provide the floats. We might, you know, we, you know...
If you change the date, you need to reach out. Now, I will be honest with you. This year, I think it's going to be tough to sell floats, period, with the way things have been going. And I'll be honest, it's been hard to sell floats the last few years. This year, I think will be even harder to sell floats.
I know, just wave the fee this year.
A professional float costs you about $500, so...
Is that somebody around here that do... Where...
There's one out of Statesville. The other one out of...
I have dealt with the last couple of years, Mayor, is Alamo Monroe.
Monroe.
We had to switch companies when we switched the date to a Saturday because the company we were dealing with, Klein's Fleet Company, I believe they were in Catawba County, they were unable to make the new date. Just to give you a quick history on the reason we changed that parade date. It used to be on Monday night, and I have a lot of complaints from the community, from people who had participants in the parade, mothers. And I was actually one of them who worked downtown. And it was a hassle for a lot of people to get their kids on a weeknight, on a school night. And it would be dark. A lot of times it would rain and get their kids to the parade to participate. And so just for numerous reasons, it made sense to switch on a Saturday. And the reason that we did... Chose the date that we did was we checked with other communities in the surrounding area to see what date their parades fell on so that we wouldn't compete with that. And so that second Saturday was the only date we could come up with during the holiday season that didn't conflict. And I can tell you, since we switched that, I've gotten very few negative comments about it. For the most part, I've gotten maybe a handful of that of people who wish it would have stayed on a Monday night. Everyone else seems very pleased that it got changed to a Saturday.
So, Joy, I think I heard you say earlier that you would take the time and effort perhaps to talk to those businesses that are downtown to ask their thoughts and comments. And to Councilmember Aldridge's suggestion, perhaps combine these two functions into the second Saturday in December, or whatever. But find out what the downtown businesses... I mean, essentially, we were having this downtown event to help them, correct? And that was the purpose of the downtown Christmas, is to help our local businesses downtown to have a festival, an event where our folks would come down and support these local businesses.
Correct.
If I had a business downtown, I would appreciate you coming to me and saying, "Okay, maybe it's time to reevaluate. Maybe we need to relook at things. Give me your thoughts on when do you think we should have it? How long should it be?" You know, because ultimately, we're trying to help them in what they sell in their merchandise. So I think those are the folks. We need to find out from them what do they want. I do think, I have heard... I have heard nothing negative about having the parade on a Saturday. It's better for families. They can see the floats. They can see the folks that are in it. And that has worked out well. I don't know why it's not a large attendance. You know, everybody remembers back in the day when, and it's nostalgic and you remember those things. But times change, things change, lifestyles change. But I don't know. Parades maybe just...
You also think our history of good weather on parade day has not been good lately. We've had a series of years where the weather has not been good.
The mayor, one reason for that. One reason for that is we have it late in the year. And the further you move toward Christmas, the more likelihood you're going to have poor weather.
Well...
We had snow, though. I have good men. The snow on a parade is pretty cool.
Well, yeah, it was a couple of years ago. But one of the... I like that idea. Maybe we give the businesses downtown maybe two or three options. Because I think if we go down and say, "When do you want to have it?" You're going to get 15 different responses.
You will.
And if you narrow it down to maybe one, two, or three...
Or combine. If you want to combine with the parade. We're looking at combining it with the parade. We're saying it's Saturday.
Give them two or three options.
On Saturday, if you try to do it at the same time, you got football. College football is huge on Saturday afternoon. I think you'd have trouble getting any people downtown.
Our parade lasts 45 minutes. So the parade normally starts about 10:30.
I think so. I think we put the downtown Christmas with it, yeah. I think, say, Chris, if you could put the downtown Christmas with it.
It seems to be easier to get in touch with the governor and see what's going to be open for Thanksgiving. And we're going to be open to stand on streets and...
And you're exactly right. We may not be able to have a parade at all. And we will not know until then. You're right.
I think we ought to plan for it.
Yes.
It's easier to cancel it than to do it in the last minute.
Ms. Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a little bit of continued history. I remember at that meeting on the 15th, I mentioned that Norwood historically has always, and I'm for years, I don't know how many years, but 25 years probably, they have used the first Wednesday of December. And they do their whole nine yards. They do their lighting of the tree. They do the parade and the lighting of the tree, et cetera, et cetera. Oprah does it the next night. They always do it the first Thursday in December. And they have the big thing. Again, at 4:30 and do the whole nine yards downtown. Locusts, I seem to be corrected, but I believe it is the Saturday after Thanksgiving. And they have done that routinely and have done their lighting of the tree and the whole nine yards. So I think that attendance at whatever we do, I think attendance will be better if we can do it everything on one day. And that's part of the reason... Part of it was we couldn't decide who was responsible for it. And my question was, if the date had already been set and it was that special, how did that happen, okay? And I'm glad we're talking about it now because one of the things I don't want to do is to get caught up three weeks before the parade and can't find what we need. So I'm glad we're doing that. I'm glad we're talking about it. But, and I'm of the opinion that we do it all at one time. You know, if we can do it all at one time. I'd love to do a parade and the downtown event. There was some discussion that night, and I can't remember who said it. Again, I said, "Well, you know, you can't have kids out on a school night too late." And somebody said to me, I think at that meeting, "Well, they won't be out too late anyway. 8:00 or something, they would be home." Even if we did downtown that night. So whatever it takes, council, Joy, Michael, whatever it takes, I think we got to get some input from whomever. And is it us that they will make the decision?
I think I'm hearing that we want to get to the businesses and bring it back to us at the 15th, if at all possible. We don't want to drag this out. We need to get the information back and make a decision at the 15th on when it's going to be.
The Friday after Thanksgiving.
Because Locusts Parade this year is on December 5th at 1:00.
The Friday after Thanksgiving, Black Friday, is what you're talking about?
Black Friday.
That's the Friday, the day after Thanksgiving.
I don't think a lot of people...
I think a lot of people are gone and shopping. I just don't...
They're just gone.
I think, that's my opinion, too, that they're gone.
Okay, thank you, Joy.
Thank you.
Number nine, April 2020 departmental monthly reports. Ms. Hall, you have a question?
Uh, yeah, just, um, and I went through it, mainly, where's Cindy tonight? Where's Cindy?
She's back here, listen.
Okay, so, because I'm not on here, and I, because I've got a paper copy of it, I mean, I read, I know Cindy was good, thank you. I kept seeing E O V, let me just make, let me find it. E O B Y 2020, which is end of business year 2020, which would be in June 30th, okay? Are we pretty much, and there are, this throughout the whole process, throughout the whole report, different people. Are we pretty much on those, particularly right away, street division, there's a lot of that in E O B Y 2020. Do we think we'll get it all used by then and be finished with some of those things, Michael?
Well, I'm trying to get to the.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, dates particularly were in Public Works.
Okay.
Page two of Public Works. Lord, that one will be pavement maintenance, yes, Lord, we spent all we got there. No, the King upgrades. You found it yet? I'm sorry.
No, it's, it's on.
We do have Ross on the line, if you want to ask specific questions.
Well, just, i- if he's in his report, if, if he thinks he's gonna use it all. Oh, God, what happened?
It's called Ross.
Oh.
Okay, so I see what you're talking about. So obviously, the, the pavements, pavement maintenance plan, that's been approved.
Right, we used it all, right.
What it's being used now. The King upgrades, probably not, because there's been, uh, well, if we're talking about, we're talking about the larger alleyway and everything behind the sweet shop bounded by King Avenue, Second Street, First Street, Main Street, um, you'll have something over the next, you know, I mentioned that in a report just in the last couple of weeks, sort of a end of a week report to Council where that stood. We were looking to go underground, it was taking some time, we're now redirecting, and Council will have something either on the next agenda or the first one in July to consider, which will then help us move forward, uh, with that particular project.
So if we don't use the money that we had verged to that specific, for example, we have 50,000 verged to correct for the King property upgrades, is that right, Michael?
It was a set, it said, yes, it says, it's a set aside of the overall street resurfacing and pavement management plan.
Right, so if we don't use that, what path do we get to, I mean, is that?
We could, you know, well, next year, we either, of the money that was approved in this budget for street pavement maintenance, it comes out of that, or then we can just reappropriate what we did spend this year and not drop down at all on the resurfacing and maintenance program.
Okay, so if we don't.
So it's still ours.
Right, so if we don't use it, then we can still get over to the next fiscal year and, and keep it for the same project if, if we would want to do so, is what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, uh, Pfeiffer Sidewalk renovation, uh, we're just lacking a small section right in front where they use, uh, coming off of Main Street to get into the property, do want to put a new sidewalk there and have equipment, heavy traffic, marring up a new sidewalk, but you can see we've, we've completed just about all the way around except that small section. The, uh, police station parking lot landscaping renovation improvements, we should be done with that by the end of the fiscal year. And then parking plan implementation, uh, the only thing we're doing this year was, was North Street between Second and Fourth, and that's already done as well.
Flip back, flip over two pages, since you're there, just flip over two pages.
Still within Public Works?
Uh, City of Almar, yeah, Solid Waste Facility. So at the top of that, when it talks about all those April dates, that's still talking about current year April 20th, April 20, right? April 2020, those are April 2020 dates.
Correct.
Okay, look at the bottom of that, where it's summary department, where it talks about recent progress, progress status, et cetera, et cetera, of the land, the, do you see that next paragraph? Project status briefly describes the current status. As of Monday afternoon, June 3rd, 2019, the system is fully operational and functioning properly. You see that?
I do.
I guess I was just wondering what that had to do with. I don't know, I just, again, I was paying real close attention to this, because I had a paper copy of it, and it didn't keep jumping to another page, just FYI on that. Okay, I just, it was interesting to me.
That probably is the correct date that the force man was put into service. Um, you know, there's still some outstanding issues there.
Right.
Still an open issue, but the project is in service.
And we're, and the issue itself is still open.
That's correct.
Okay. And my last thing is, is, um, on Mark's report, it's interesting, um, the prospects, this is again for April, most of this was for April and not a lot for May, but, um, under prospects, third bullet part, and that would have been, I guess, the very first page of the department reports, working on two prospects, continuing to look at downtown, at downtown for entertainment-related business. Do we, is that something that we have heard from him in this report before that I have not read?
You probably won't if he's working with somebody that's wanting to stay.
I understand that, but has any, does anybody remember seeing two prospects for downtown? I don't remember ever reading that, I don't care who they are, I just didn't realize that we were, had that, and I guess it was just new, and again, maybe I had, didn't read it the last two times. So, that's all that I had, but Mayor.
Moving to municipal calendar, you have questions on that?
And the reason I asked that it be held open is because at the time that it was on the agenda, we had not yet talked about July or August, and if that was all gonna float, so, that's the reason I did that.
We were a little later than I, we had anticipated, so does anyone have anything that needs to come before Council? I'm not gonna go around the table unless you have something.
I, I think it was.
Well, that's the grammar.
We have tonight, a little bit toys out of judicial hearing. We just recently got some from Kevin Robinson describing a quasi-judicial hearing, that we were not supposed to talk to anybody ahead of time, we were not supposed to. Anything about the issue until we get it here. See, well, until I got here, I didn't know that was a quasi-judicial hearing. If we were gonna handle it, if you all put it in the agenda, that this is quasi, quasi-judicial, and we're not talking to anybody ahead of time, because people don't, they don't care whether it's quasi-judicial, they want to tell me what they think ought to be done.
Correct.
So we need to know ahead of time.
Conditional use.
What, what those, what, what, what those are.
Conditional use.
Another thing, it's something about budgeting, again, and this is not a question, uh, we can discuss. When we talk about a, a sidewalk in front of my building, why does it cost us anything? And the reason I say that, we don't hire a new person to do the, to work on it, our crew does it. We have money in the budget for concrete and asphalt and that sort of thing. I'm just curious why we have, have anything singled out like that is costing us over and above budget.
Well, it's not over and above the budget, but we do have to, I'm not sure if that's a reference to the monthly report, but we do have to, we do like to say this is, we've got to capitalize the asset as well once we put in a, a new sidewalk, so, I mean, we're just, we're just tracking, you know, we're trying to track costs as to what this particular project costs. It's not over and above anything we've budgeted.
Okay, well, see, I had the impression that when it's put in there like that, that that's a separate item from what we have in the budget, and I, I know.
Oh, no, no. We are just tracking it, letting Council know it's a significant project, it costs about this much, and, and we're done with it, but we also do have to track the cost.
Okay.
But it's not in addition to anything within the budget.
Anyone else have anything?
Couple things real quick, I just wanted to, uh, just wanted to say, uh, give thanks or make, or make a notice of Stanley Appliance on 52. They've really done a lot over the last couple of weeks to improve the, the look of the business, they've put down some mulch, or put down some pine needles, put out some flowers, and if you remember, head north on 52, there were a lot of old appliances on that in that parking lot. So they've built some sort of a structure there to house some of those things, so it definitely looks a lot more, uh, appealing going up, going up, probably, to the next question is, uh, Chief Brunton, uh, any progress, uh, Chief Brunton, on the air packs, um, that we were, we're looking for for the fire department, for the firefighters?
Yes, sir, as a matter of fact, uh, we spoke on that last week, Mr. Paris and myself. So, where we are now is actually moving into an investigation phase, uh, letting the firefighters, uh, the committee go back in, reevaluate, and then from there, we'll be making our purchase recommendation to Council.
Okay. Have we, have we received bids on that stuff yet?
Yes, sir, we have.
Listen, Mayor, uh.
Yes, Mayor.
When can the grass please be cut, at least at the house, uh, across the courthouse? I'm getting, my phone gets blown up about, when will the grass be cut? When's the building, house coming down? I know we've talked about it, we get our dates, but we have, what, what's the status?
They're, they're in the process of, of getting ready to demolish it.
Like?
I, I don't have a given, but at the time right now, I mean, it had definitely had to slow down with everything else. But we've been trying to work with them on that as much as possible, knowing they're getting ready to go in.
And I told them, I said, "Listen, y'all, it's coming down, it's coming down."
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, quick. Uh, we, Procybrio RPO did have a meeting, we had our first Zoom meeting about a week and a half ago. Just a couple of bullet things, we did approve the list, the P6 list of projects to submit to DOT. Um, and if you've been hearing about DOT's funding situation, these are way down the road. But, um, we went through the process, so if anybody wants to look at them, put your mask on, come over and I'll show them to you. Couple of things you might be interested in, in case anybody asks, the 2427 widening should be complete by the end of 2023, and the bridge should be finished about six months before that, about mid-2023. That's it.
Further?
We just got a couple of quick items, Mayor.
Sure.
You know, we did not meet for our second meeting in May, but you're all aware of this, that the mayor issued proclamation, designated May 13th to May 23rd, oh, I'm sorry, May 17th to May 23rd as, uh, National Public Works Week in Albemarle, and, uh, we did hold that event, and the mayor signed the proclamation, it was shared with all of you. But just in this setting, I wanted to mention that, uh, it was May 17th through 23rd. Public Works does a lot of projects, a lot of things that we've discussed tonight, been asked about, uh, public works related, and they, they're very, you know, high, high-touch, high-impact type of service, and so, just again, want to recognize that Public Works Department, uh, which encompasses quite a bit in Albemarle, uh, was recognized for May 17th and, uh, May 23rd. Secondly, uh, the sign for the, the new sign for the Jack Neal Water Tree Plant should be installed this week. So Council has mentioned wanting to do something at some point, um, you know, the banner is up, the new sign will, the banner will down, the new sign will be in place, and of course, not something we'll do this week, but just some sort of event or something at that location, so I'm just not sure what Council is wanting to do.
I think you just get in touch with Joanne, she knows that you're gonna call her. So if you don't mind reaching out to Joanne and finding out when she and her sisters will be together. I know with COVID, they may not be, but they've been all together occasionally, and I, I think we owe it to her. I would love for them to set the date for us, for, for that to happen, because her, for her sisters to be around.
So what do we, just asking them to come up and, you know, all the council that can attend, get some pictures in front of the new sign, because it will be up.
That's, that's what I, I mean, that's what I'd do. Cut a ribbon or tape it, you know, or do an official unveiling, even though it's been unveiled, we could.
Yeah, that'd be good.
I mean, do an official unveiling is what I would like to see. And hold on to the old one for me, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
So we will, I'll reach out to, um, Joanne, and when she says a good day from her, we'll send it, I'll let Council know.
I'll get you her number, just a minute.
Okay.
Anything else?
I've got a couple of things. Speaking of DOT, we did get DOT to, I don't know if any of you, Chief, you may have seen it, as in Police Chief, you may have seen how bad it was at 52 and, um, North Second Street, right there at Lince's, the overground where the Daylilies used to be. Uh, I was turning right there the other day, and I couldn't, because it was like I couldn't see. But they cut it down, yeah, yeah, I made some phone calls, and they cut it down there. And they said that even with the hold on the DOT budget, that they, um, are gonna try to come out sometime this month, Kevin, and spray it anyway, so they did get that done. Uh, attaboy, and thank you to everybody who had anything to do with the East Cannon, um, the East Cannon fix. I walk that way on a daily basis, and, you know, this morning walking, I realized that had it not been fixed, guys with the 10 and a half inches of rain we had in the last 14 days, it would have been a huge mess. So thank you. Um, I do know that the, the trucks were down at Milker Branch, and I guess, I don't know, I don't know who would need to be talking about that, they were down at, um, the apartments on North Sixth Street, uh, most of Wednesday and Thursday and Friday, um, with I and I, I guess, and just, we've had a, we have got a huge issue down there, okay? And they were down there, um, practically 24/7, um, leaving and coming back and leaving and coming, coming back. Uh, good work to the chief on those, um, those murders, and the people that have, thank you very much, good work there, good work to the federal sentencing, and I'm hoping that, that federal sentencing of those big drug folks will stop or put a, put a stop to some things. Um, I did see that Locust was having a cleanup. Locust is doing a white goods cleanup, the city is. And we've, and I've noticed, I thought about it the other day, cleaning up 2427 like you and Pat do, and cleaning up in your area. On Sixth Street, part of my walk lately, I've realized just how dirty some things are. And the creeks and the streams are really dirty, where people throw things out, and they'll end up, and I've seen it. Um, and I don't know who in the city we could get, everybody is really taxed right now. But I would love it, particularly because we've got so many young people out of school, and they will be out of school now for the next two and a half months, well, probably the next two months. I'd love it if we could pull some folks together and do a cleanup again. Um, granted, we can't do it because of crowd control, but we sure could encourage some more of that like we've done in the past, just with our own areas. I know that, um, I think, maybe was it Ross that provided some bags in the past?
He does.
And I would love if we could somehow, uh, and I, I can't dream it, Nikki, you're just, you see big things, you see big pictures. Um, if I've said, if I've said it now, I've set the seed, it may be that we just have some bags here at City Hall, and if people would come get them and just fill them up, and I don't know how we could do it, but, guys, we got a dream, we've got the time right now, staff doesn't, but the people still aren't working, kids are still out there, if we could encourage some of that, that would be fabulous. And I know, Bill Aldrich, you fussed about 52 North and that paving. Uh, I had a call this afternoon saying, "Is that done? That is horrible." So, I know that we still got some work there to do, as I understand it, right, Michael?
Haven't heard anything back from the DOT.
Okay.
Haven't, haven't received any complaints, but, you know, I guess Council's hearing from.
We're hearing from people in the city, because when people, at least these people that I'm hearing from live in the city, and even though it's a DOT, they knew that it was a water break, the water main that caused it. So, I think we got, we owe it to people to tell them what's going on there, and whatever we need to do to make that better, because it's really bad. Lastly, uh, there was a moratorium with the Executive Order 142, that we could not, uh, cut people's power off and that kind of thing, excuse me?
124.
Maybe it was 124, but I got the numbers back, but this Lexi, whatever it is, you know what I'm talking about. And it was supposed to have ended yesterday. Was there an extension, there was an extension, I believe there was an extension from the governor on that.
Sixty, sixty days.
Sixty more days, so that would go with us, too, right?
Yes.
We would have to do that, too. Last thing is, y'all saw that the county got 1.2 million dollars from the CARES money? Um, I'm still of the opinion that we still could probably have some of that or use some of that doing some stuff. And, um, lastly.
That's three, the last. That's three.
You know what, guys, we are here, and whatever how long it takes, ever how long it takes. Uh, thanks to Nikki, um, and to the management team, last week, um, we could have been in a heck of a lot of problems, having a lot of trouble last week. And I may have stirred some stuff a couple of weeks ago, and if I did, so be it, but, um, thank you, because last week ended up a lot better than it could have. Y'all were prepared, so, um, that was my last thing, so.
Mayor? Yes, sir.
I'd like to add something, I talked with Dr. Lillard and Piper this afternoon, then last Friday, they got the approval to open up the Occupational Area Program, and that will open in Albemarle in August. That means both programs are gonna be housed in that building come August. And that means we've got about a year's grace period, when we can handle the parking and, and that sort of thing, and housing for that number of people. But in probably two years, we're gonna be under great pressure, uh, to be able to house all the students and park them. So we just gotta keep that in mind.
Further comments? I'll entertain a motion we adjourn until June 15th, at 6 o'clock.
Let me just sit here and start it.
So, motion by Councilmember Whitley, second, by Councilmember Aldrich, further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
China.